The meeting to order. We have the flag salute by Supervisor Cosmickey.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get acknowledgement of the certificate of posting?
So move.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, four zero. And we have a presentation this morning, correct? Supervisor Tiffany?
So we have a presentation proclamation declaring the month of October as the 21st Annual Binoational Health Week in San Benito County.
I don't know if there's a whole room full of people, welcome. So this is, I won't read everything, but this is a proclamation for the Binoational Health Week 2021. Whereas the Secretariates of Health and of Foreign Affairs of Mexico, the Ministries of Foreign Affairs of Guatemala, Honduras, Colombia, and Peru, the United States Mexico Border Health Commission and the Health Initiative of the Americas, a program of the University of California Berkeley School of Public Health have recognized the necessity of improving access to health services for the underserved Latino population in the United States of America. And whereas according to the United States Census in 2017, this country is home to more than 57 million people of Latino origin. And improving the health of mobile population requires multiple approaches in service design, delivery, funding priorities, and most fundamentally requires strong Binoational commitment. And I will skip ahead, whereas Binoational Health Week provides an opportunity to highlight critical health issues in the state of California and throughout the United States and will serve as the basis for future bilateral efforts. Be it proclaimed by the border supervisors of Samhio County, then in honor of those efforts to improve public health, the month of October 2021 be declared the 21st Annual Binoational Health Week throughout Samhio County, California. I'll just make a comment that particularly dealing with COVID as we have the last couple of years, this has really come, I think particularly to our attention, the great need to reach the Latino population, the underserved. And we've, I think we've done our best to do that, but it's a continuing challenge to make sure that we're doing that in Samhio County. So I think this is a very important proclamation. So congratulations for the month. Thank you. Sir, when? Anyone in particular that I can give that to?
Yeah, I don't know who the certificate goes to. Do we have anyone here to receive it?
Bring it back to administration and we'll get that sent out.
Okay, thank you. So, Madam Clerk, the public comment.
I'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom you can press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. In chambers, we'll start off with Robert Bernoski.
I'm extremely disappointed in the behavior of the county of San Benito, which you are at the top of. You have caused havoc in the lives of people I love and people that I work with to make San Benito County the best it can be. A tragedy occurred last week and many people I guess you do not know or care about are dealing with it. Your actions exponentially make their job more difficult. What you did was to create a narrative about the tragedy with only the hope that the facts would later line up with your story. Two times I communicated to you that your facts were wrong. The first time I communicated that simply by asking the question, how does the county know what it says it knows? It would highlight the falsity of your press release. Specifically, you claim that the tragedy was due or related to COVID. You've linked it inappropriately to an activity that happened well in the past irrelevance. The havoc this caused was substantial. It caused news trucks to park outside a school, causing a distraction to students. Reporters tied up office staff, proffering lies in order to get into administrative offices when staff needed to be attending students. News reporters interviewed parents with leading questions based on your misleading press release, providing more sensationalization for the five, six, and 11 o'clock news, two days in a row. Fortunately, KSBW listened and apparently did research and corrected their original story, although a lot of damage was already done. However, according to KSBW, the county inexplicably confirmed another incorrect fact about the patient involved, linking her to an event three weeks ago. Simultaneously, one of you went on TV and made disparaging misleading comments about the entity involved. I again contacted you, but you were unmoved. The county was not wavering from its initial position, no matter what the facts were. I can no longer trust the county of San Benito, and that hurts for me to say. You are not governing and managing. You are being 100% political. Whatever you say cannot be trusted. Thank you.
Next, we have Christina Chavez.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. My name is Christina Chavez. I was born and raised in Hollister and have been a loyal county employee for the past five years. I'm an auditor appraiser with the assessor's office, which means I assess and value business personal property. And I audit businesses in the county to ensure proper valuation is in place and therefore being appropriately taxed upon. I come to speak to you today regarding the issues of recruitment and retention, which we know are the two biggest issues the county faces today. I know that in my department, several people chose to retire once the pandemic hit. Since then, we have lost a few additional positions in just the past couple of months. And when people do leave, they usually cite the wages and high costs in healthcare as being the leading factors of choosing to work elsewhere. As mentioned in previous border supervisor meetings, the employment vacancy rate is over 20%, which is a very big problem and needs to be addressed. Having such a high vacancy rate means your staff, which are myself and my colleagues, are understaffed and overworked. The only way that this problem can be resolved is by focusing on recruitment and retention efforts. You, the board of supervisors, have an opportunity to collaborate with SEIU Local 521 and help find solutions to these issues. Increasing wages to be more comparable to the market will help attract potential employees. Increased wages to be more, increased wages will retain your current employees and will also acknowledge the health and safety risks we took to loyally work through this pandemic and protect our community. Providing unique benefits such as a holiday closure, providing a hazard pay, and really considering expanding longevity are great incentive efforts that can be provided. By addressing recruitment and retention, doing so will not only improve our working conditions, but will also allow us to better serve the community. Thank you.
Regina Valentine?
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. My name is Regina Valentine and I'm a third generation resident, master's degree holder from San Jose State, county employee overseeing our public transit, ensuring access to vital services such as medical care, and proud member of the SAU 521 bargaining team, representing my colleagues and their families. I wanted to speak to you today to highlight the ongoing recruitment and retention issue you're aware of with our over 20% budget of vacancy, position vacancy that's been exacerbated by the pandemic. In my department, public transit, we have had the position of our singular mechanic vacant for a year, which has been, was filled by a previous person for nine months who regularly would complain to me about how expensive it is to provide healthcare for his family. Although our recruitment and retention issue is ongoing, thankfully you have the power to ensure proper staffing to provide essential services by offering benefits that both attract and keep quality staff here serving the community. Last year, when the class and comp study was completed, the majority of us did not see any adjustments. Even those classifications that were brought up were only done to 10% below market. In closing, thank you for the opportunity to speak and we appreciate the collaboration providing quality service to the community. Thank you.
Veronica Lozama?
Good morning, Madam Chair Gonzalez and members of the board. Veronica Lozama, San Benito SEIU Chapter President. We're here this morning representing over 260 San Benito County employees. During the last several weeks, our bargaining team has been hard at work negotiating with our county and our proposal reflects the values of our members. We ask that the county recognize the values that our employees bring to the community by offering a thoughtful and fair, reasonable contract. Our county employees are working harder than ever, as noted, not only during a pandemic, but also operating at a 20, as the county operates at a 25% budget vacancy. During these challenging times, the county employees, our county employees have stepped up with no additional compensation or support. This is the opportune time to show your county employees what they mean to you as they serve the community they care so much about. Thank you for your time.
Belen Martinez?
Hola, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Belen Martinez. Soy un proveedor, un orgulloso miembro de SEIU 2015. He's sido proveedora por 34 años.
Hi, good morning. My name is Belen Martinez. I'm a proud member of SEIU Local 2015 and I've been a provider for, a home care provider for 34 years.
Este trabajo es muy difícil y estresante. A causa de este trabajo, yo y otros proveedores necesitamos salud médica.
This job is very difficult and very stressful. It causes myself and other providers to need health insurance.
Que no tenemos para poder seguir trabajando como proveedores en casa.
Which right now we don't have to continue to work as home care providers in the home.
Así es que por favor ustedes como supervisores nos escuchen y nos apoyen en darnos salud médica.
So please, we're asking the supervisors to hear us and to support us and to give us health insurance and a living wage.
Nosotros, el pueblo, les dimos nuestro voto para que ustedes estén en esa silla.
Us, the community, gave us your vote so that you all could be in the position that you're in right now.
Ahora nosotros necesitamos de ustedes apoyo y voto para un contrato justo.
Now we need your support and your vote to get a just contract.
Nosotros somos trabajadores esenciales, merecemos respeto, merecemos un salario justo, merecemos aseguranza, eso es lo básico que un trabajador necesita para poder seguir trabajando, gracias.
We are essential workers. We deserve a fair wage. We deserve health benefits. This is just the bare essential that you need to be in a just work environment. Thank you for your time.
Maria Elena Pérez Gallegos?
Mi nombre es María Elena Pérez Gallegos.
Hi, my name is María Elena Pérez Gallegos.
Y yo quisiera que nos dieran lo justo, que es una cobertura médica porque a veces que no tenemos ni paya al doctor y el costo de la vida es muy caro aquí.
What we're here asking for is for just wages and for medical coverage.
De lo que yo les pido, por favor.
This is what I'm asking for you, please.
Y a todos mis compañeros.
And from all of our coworkers.
Porque es un trabajo muy estresante.
Because this is a very stressful job.
Y no tener cobertura médica no podemos, señor doctor.
And not having medical coverage, we can't even go to the doctor.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Julie Rocha?
Good morning, Madam and Board of Supervisors. My name is Julie Rocha. I am a local Hollister resident, a IHSS provider for my daughter. She's 21 years old, following a motor vehicle accident, is now living with a TBI. I am also a member of SEIU 2015. And I come to express on behalf of myself as her provider and my fellow coworkers as other providers who may one day take over for me and care for my daughter and express to you all how important it is for us to have that healthcare insurance. Biggest fear of mine is what would my daughter do? Who would care for my daughter if something happened to me health-wise? Who would take over and care for my daughter? So I speak on behalf of future caregivers that, you know, that they be valued for the work that they do. That is valuable care provided to my daughter. It is not by choice that she is no longer dependent of herself or independent and has to depend on a caregiver. So it is important to us that we get a livable wage. It is important to us that we have that healthcare. I resigned from my full-time career to care for my daughter. This could happen to anyone. I no longer have that healthcare insurance. So it is important that we have that and if you would please consider that in the negotiations. Thank you for your time.
Ana Rosa Heredia?
Good morning. My name is Ana Rosa Heredia. I'm working for IHSS. La razón por la cual me presento hoy es para pedirle que considere en fondos.
The reason I'm here today is that for you all to consider funds.
Para el programa para mejorar salarios y proveer seguro de salud para el cuidado que proveemos.
For the program to get better wages and to provide healthcare in this work that we do.
Wow. El trabajo fue considerado esencial y sigue siendo esencial. El trabajo fue considerado esencial y sigue siendo esencial durante la pandemia.
This work was considered essential and it continues to be essential during the pandemic.
Ah, por eso yo creo que ya es justo que consideren realmente con hechos.
That's why I believe that it is just that you consider what we're, what we're saying.
Me gustaría realmente que pensaran un momento sobre si ustedes o algún miembro de su familia necesitaran el, el cuidado para alguno de sus familiares.
I would like for you all to take a moment to consider the situation if you all were in this position where you had to take care of a family member.
Ah, y no tuvieran los medios para pagar y necesitaran uno de los proveedores.
And you didn't have the means to, to pay for anything.
Ah, pero este proveedor negaría este servicio ya que este ser, este programa no, no paga lo suficiente para poder sobrevivir en este condado o en este, que sabemos que es muy caro.
This provider in this situation would not want to do this work because they would not be able to afford anything to, to survive.
Sabemos que la inflación de los costos de vivienda está en descontro total para la mayoría.
We know that inflation is raising the cost of everything out of control for the majority of people.
La mai- la mayoría de personas tenemos que pensar entre pagar nuestras rentas para vivir en un hogadino o llevar comida a nuestras casas.
The majority of people have to consider whether they're going to be using their money to pay for rent or if they're going to be using it to pay for food.
Por favor, ya no es justo. Necesitamos, por favor, una negociación de nuestros contratos pensando humanamente en la calidad de vida que tenemos que tener.
Please, this is not just anymore. We need you to consider in, in contract negotiations what we need, what we need. So please, take us into account, better wages and health insurance.
Yeah, so, ah, la única, la última cosa, soy proveadora de mi hija, tiene, es pequeña. No es fácil, como dijo una compañera, estar emocionalmente bien y pensar en que si nos enfermamos o en nuestro futuro, qué va a pasar de nosotros.
So I take care of my daughter and like a coworker of ours said, it is not easy and it's difficult.
Qué va a pasar con nuestra salud.
It's not always easy, especially when we have to think about what might happen to our own health.
So please, and thank you for, for hearing me. My English not good, but I try. Please consider this for the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriela Cordero?
Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Gabriela Cordero.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Gabriela Cordero.
Me moví del condado de Santa Cruz hace dos años con ocho meses con la ilusión de vivir en una casa grande, de poder ahorrar dinero, pero fue completamente lo contrario.
I moved from the county of Santa Cruz a couple of years ago with the illusions of being able to buy a home and to be able to, to have a place more affordable.
Aquí todo es más caro que en el condado de Santa Cruz y la pandemia ha venido a hacer todo más caro, más difícil para nuestros clientes, para nosotros mismos.
Things ended up being more expensive here for me than in Santa Cruz and throughout this pandemic, things have only gotten even more expensive.
Y creo que nuestros clientes merecen vivir en un lugar confortable, limpio, seguro, y necesitamos.
And we believe that our clients deserve to live in a place that's comfortable, that's clean, that's healthy, and we need your support from you.
Para mejorar los salarios y el seguro médico.
To better the wages and the health insurance.
Gracias y te pasen buen dia.
Thank you and have a great day.
Elia Salinas?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I want to bring to the attention, I know that you already probably have seen it, but there's the water runoff issue at Mansfield and Fairview Road that's being caused by the construction site over at the Santana Ranch. It's been an issue for a few years and I know that when Supervisor Mark Medina left, there had been some promises made by the county and he's no longer here. So that has fallen through the cracks and I would like someone to pick up that issue to help those residents out there. Also, I have been coming here for years and I have spoken that these county employees should get a prevailing wage and I know that there was a salary study done. And I don't know where that sits with regards to what they're trying to do. Do they fall under the study and now they want additional? I don't know. But what I can say is the SEIU is a very powerful union. They donated $6.6 million to the recall against, against the recall for Governor Newsom. I know that California covered insurers, people who don't have insurance under their employment. And what I'm trying to say is that the SEIU is a very, very well-funded union and I would hope that the locals would turn to their union for help. If they're not being covered by the county, then maybe the union should cover it because I know other unions do it. And that being said, I am very pro-union, but also as a very well-funded union across the state and wherever else it is. Recently, just early this month, their, the president of SEIU, Alma Hernandez, was arrested for fraud, for taking money from the SEIU. So I think these folks need to gather together and power within themselves to see what they can do against the union that's not representing them correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. On Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon on your screen. You've been unmuted. Please state your name, district, and you have two minutes.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Board of Supervisors. My name is Wendy Solorio. I am a lifelong resident of San Benito County and I'm also a almost 14-year employee of the county of San Benito. I'm speaking to you today and I'm urging you to direct the bargaining unit that's representing the county to enter into a fair and, a fair contract with SEIU 521. I am currently a child support supervisor at the Department of Child Support Services. I'm committed to my community, I'm committed to my staff, and I'm committed to the county of San Benito. This cor- this pandemic has been a big burden on essential employees who stepped up daily regardless of what was going on at home to serve our community, most of which is the underserved community. In speaking to the vacancy rate in San Benito County, at the last meeting, it was said that our department had 13 positions, three vacant, which was 10 employees. And it was commented that that was good because we're an important department. I'm going to tell you that that's 24% vacancy rate in the Department of Child Support Services. We, I have continuously, as well as my staff, taken on additional responsibilities. I currently cover three full-time positions in just my role as supervisor. When I started back in 2008, we had 25-plus employees, none of which we have been able to keep or retain. I am the lowest senior position in the Department of Child Support Services. I urge you to examine all of the records that we, we provide. We also put money back into the county budget via our collections. This was very stressful for our families in the community when the pandemic hit, getting, losing their jobs, not knowing how they're going to eat. We worked relentlessly.
You've been unmuted. Please state your name, your district, and you have two minutes.
My name is Raymond Garcia. I'm in IHSSA. Good morning, Chairmembers of the board. I'm a five-year resident and property owner here in San Benito County. I have a bachelor's degree from San Jose State in Business, a wife and two children, one of who is disabled. I'm an eligibility specialist three and I've been employed here at the county for over three years. I take great pride in being able to guide people in the community through the process of receiving benefits for themselves and their families. As an SEIU member, I wanted to speak to you today to highlight the ongoing recruitment and retention issues you are aware of that have been exacerbated by the pandemic. In my department, high levels of turnover are the norm, causing extreme pressure and stress to those who choose to stay and continue to work. Recruitment and retention is an ongoing issue. Thankfully, you have the power to correct it by providing benefits that both attract and keep quality staff here serving the community. By increasing pay to keep up with the cost of living and health insurance, increasing longevity to incentivize those who have trained to stay and providing paid time off during the holidays so that we can spend time with our families. In closing, I thank you for consideration and appreciate the partnership is providing quality service to our community. Thank you.
You've been unmuted. Please state your name and your district and you have two minutes.
Good morning. My name is Estrella Estarcia Johnson. I am a resident of San Juan Batista and resident District 2. I come before you, good morning, Chairwoman and fellow supervisors. I am a proud mother, wife, artist, IHSS caregiver and SEIU local member. I come before you today to express my thoughts on the ongoing negotiations between the county and our union for our contract. I want to make sure that you know some details that I think are incredibly important. My, you and my fellow caregivers, as many have said so eloquently, I want you to know that we work. This is our job. This is our profession. This is our career. We are not asking for something that we don't work for. It is very important that as our society continues to age and as more people get identified as needing assistance, that the people that caring for them are of the best quality. This means that they need their mental health taken care of and their physical health taken care of. And they need to know that when they are done with their years of service, that they will be able to take care, be taken care of themselves. This is really, really important, also for where the county is budget-wise right now because studies have shown that when workers receive this kind of support, workers' health improves, worker productivity increases, absenteeism is reduced, and so is turnover. Human resources are truly, as the pandemic has showed us, some of the most precious and important of our society. Please take into consideration that a society, a society may best be measured by how it treats those who are least able to care for themselves. All such, please consider our values as those who stepped into this work to be observed. We are always and we remain public servants taking care of those.
Please state your name and your district and you have two minutes. You've been unmuted? No further comments.
Thank you. Okay, so, Department head announcements?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning to the board. Uh, yeah, we have some announcements. I'd like to invite up Mike Chambliss, our interim RMA Director. He has a quick update for your board.
Good morning. Just wanted to let you know, Best Road is complete, are open. Best Road is complete and open. There's a couple little bird baths out there that aren't a punch list, but that one's done. Fairview also is complete and open. And then we have the 5,000 block of South Side, which we're still waiting on guardrail four. So it'll be a few more weeks before we can ramp that one back up and get that finished. I wanted to talk to you about the parks real quick. Sunnyside Park, we have the, the draft bubble diagram, the first concept of the park, complete. And we're scheduling a public meeting at Vets Hall on November 15th at 6:00 PM to discuss that and get public feedback on that. There will be another meeting scheduled on the weekend. We're working out details to try to find a location because the weather changed. We kind of can't do it outside anymore. And then on the regional park, as you're aware, the grants were, are, were due next week with the state. But the state moved the field, field goal posts, so now they're due in, in January. So I'll be bringing an item to you at the next meeting to discuss what that means to the schedule and receive direction from you on, on how you want to proceed. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. We also have another announcement out of our Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Taylor?
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Uh, just a real, real quick update. We are relaunching what we had started a number of months ago and then put down for a little while. But we're back in cooperation with our private partners in the river area and we're coordinating a river cleanup, if you will. So we'll come back and report back once we have a date for that. But it'll be the properties from the area of the Hospital Road Bridge all the way out to 156. It'll probably take a few days.
Few days, but.
We're going to start and focus our efforts originally with the landowners that are around Hospital Road all the way up to Apricot. If you have any questions, you can get ahold of me or ask me now and I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Questions? I know that I was, that's been an ongoing concern for the supervisors.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you to the sheriff. This is something that I've really strongly supported getting this riverbed cleaned up since the spring and so I really appreciate it. And if, if you do by chance need any help, I know this is a security sort of thing, but if you need any help, I would be glad to come down and help. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the sheriff as well. It is a big issue. Look, quick question. Are you, and maybe you mentioned this, are you coordinating this? I know the city of Hollister has been doing some work as well. I'm just curious, is there coordination there?
Yeah, um, just for.
Clarification, the city did reach out to our office when they did their most recent cleanup effort. I don't think that they really moved any encampments down there, but that is a benefit for us to have Mike Chambliss aboard now to really help walk us through some of the nuances of the public and private property issues and storage issues and how we can move people along. But, so to, to get started, we are just working with private landowners. That's the, for lack of a better term, that's the easiest or the lowest hanging fruit to go after first because of the, it's actually the landowners that are doing the cleanup and we will be doing the security for them. And then we'll coordinate with the city as we move on from there and we have open bed space and we can actually have a place to move people. That's really the, the hang-up right now is where do we put people? But private property, those rules don't apply, so we're starting there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Uh, yes, we have another announcement out of our Health and Human Services Department. We have Enrique Ariola for a brief, brief comment.
Uh, thank you very much. Good morning, members of the board and the public. My name is Enrique Ariela, Deputy Director for Health and Human Service Agency, Community Service and Workforce Development. I have some very exciting news I'd like to share with you and the public. Uh, the governor has allocated an investment of approximately $30 million for rehabilitation projects benefiting all of the migrant centers statewide. Approximately a month and a half ago, we submitted a request in the amount of $2.1 million. And I'm excited to inform you, the State Housing and Community Development Office of Migrant Services has approved an allocation of $2.3 million. Now, this is a big deal, especially for the 67 migrant farm worker families that travel long distances to work here in San Benito County. These funds will be used to rehabilitate all of the 67 migrant center houses, including the replacement of the roofs, interior and exterior painting, rehabilitation of the laundry facilities, rehabilitation of the kitchen, high-speed internet and other minor yet valuable projects. The State Housing and Community Development and the governor's office will be making their announcement of these funds and the awards through a press conference here at the San Benito County Migrant Center on Tuesday, November the 16th at 9:30 AM. I hope you can join us at this press conference and there'll be more information to come. Thank you for your attention.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Enrique. Thanks, uh, thanks for your hard work as well as Tracy and the team. Uh, we have another announcement out of administration. Gracie? Gracie Rodriguez, analyst?
Morning, Madam Chair, Board Supervisors and Community. Um, I would just like to inform the board that we have created a webpage on our county website in regards to roads and bridges. We're slowly adding more information as it comes across. And then second announcement, we just wanted to inform the community that we have concluded the memorial and we'd like to thank everyone that was involved in making that possible. Community members who had a flag embroidered, we please ask that you come to the administration office to pick that up or call the administration office to set up a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Gracie. And, and that first item was a request from your board about addressing the road. And that first item was a request from your board about addressing the road links. Thank you to the team for working on that. I did want to add a couple more items or comments to the board. We will be soon coming back to your board with a PIO, a new spec. We'll be going out to recruitment soon, as soon as we get that done, so you'll be seeing that coming to your board soon. And we really need to have a PIO full-time and there's a lot of work that needs to be done on that side, so we'll be bringing that back to your board. Also been requested from Joe Paul Gonzalez that we have a hard stop on item number two. So it's going to be really close, I think we'll be right about there at 10 o'clock, excuse me. So item number two at 10 o'clock. So it'll be, we'll be pretty close on target, I think. But just an FYI. As well as, I just wanted to highlight future agenda items. I'll be brief. We have a tax sharing agreement, a tax sharing item that'll be coming to your board. There's going to be a pothole filler. We're also working on a Brown Act and charter requests from your board when we get a new Board of Supervisors, so the plan is December 15th for that. We'll also be addressing reserve policies either November 9th or the 23rd, depends. November 9th is getting pretty full. We have, we'll be presenting to your board a timeline on in-house janitorial service, working on that, as well as a sales tax. So we did get approval to move that forward, so we'll be presenting that to your board soon. The plan is November 9th. We also will have your nonprofit agenda item coming to your board November 9th. We have a bonding capacity item that your board had requested, and that's November 9th as well, along with lobbyist contracts, ARPA funding, landfill, town hall. There was a meeting that we had that we're going to be looking at doing a town hall in Sequo in early springtime, I believe it is. I believe when it gets finalized, it'll be in May, but that's the projection. So just an FYI, you'll be seeing that in the beginning of 2022, as well as a few other, there's a lot of other items. But we've got a lot of work. Those are the requests from your board and we just wanted to make sure that the board is updated, that we are working on them and they'll be coming back to your board. That's all the announcements that we have, Madam Chair.
Sounds like you guys have been busy. I appreciate that. Okay, so let's go ahead and go to board announcements. So who would like to go first?
Go ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair. So yeah, just real quick, thank you. I didn't want to interrupt Enrique, but just very, very exciting news on the migrant housing and the $2.3 million from the state. That's a big victory, so really congratulations to the staff and to our community on that and to our migrant families who are going to benefit from that. And thank you to staff for the update on all these really, really important items and you know, we have a new board here and we have a lot of things we want to get done, I think. I think we can all agree on that, and so I think this is another sign of just, you know, we're really moving forward as a community and I appreciate all the work staff's doing to help us do that. As far as my announcements, I've had continued concerns, I've talked with staff about it. I appreciate the collaboration from staff and RMA on some of the parking issues, semi-truck parking issues on Prescott Road between Anzar High School and San Juan Batista. And so I know staff is aware of it. I've met with our new CHP commander, I don't know if everybody knows, but we have a new CHP commander in the area, Phil Cooper, very nice guy and was, I reached out to him and we sat down and had some coffee last week and we talked about some of these issues and CHP's been very responsive to this parking issue and was very open to listening to my concerns about back road traffic in San Juan Batista area in particular and enforcement on 156 and Highway 25. I've made it clear that I felt like over the years there just hasn't been a lot of it. They do have, they don't have a lot of staffing like a lot of government agencies. Most people don't realize, maybe they only have two CHP officers for both counties at nighttime and then four during the day per each shift. So that's, that can explain why you maybe don't see as much enforcement, but they are aware of the concern and I appreciated Phil Cooper's time on that. He also did bring up, you know, they'd be open to partnering with the county if we're at, if we want to pursue grants, for instance, for CHP traffic enforcement, and so I told him I would let staff know about that as well. As far as other issues, just I've had a lot of residents concerned, especially in my side of the county, about the beddable area construction and I've talked to staff about that. And so just so it's clear that the seasonal, it's a seasonal farm stand that is currently being constructed. And so basically with a seasonal farm stand, you know, essentially there are very specific rules you have to follow and so I've just made staff aware that, you know, let's make sure that they're following those rules going forward as far as what's allowed to be sold there and whatnot. You can only sell products that are grown on the property. So if anybody has any questions about that though, please feel free to reach out to me on that or anything else. And then just want to encourage residents to get the flu shot. It's especially important this year with COVID and the risks of severe reactions if you happen to get both. And also just really important to minimize the impacts to our already drained healthcare system here locally. So really want to encourage everyone to get the flu shot. Those are widely available and the county's, I believe, offering a flu clinic coming up here, and I know our employees have access to the flu shots as well. And then if the storms that recently hit, I just wanted to reiterate the complaint that we heard about the detention pond. I did listen to the residents' concerns about that and have talked to staff about that and I'll be staying on top of that issue even though we don't currently have a supervisor in that district. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just piggybacking on the roads, I recently, yesterday drove on Best Road and check it out and it's an amazing improvement. It's a goal for us on all county roads, but anyway, it's great to have that done. And again, just a reminder that money, the monies paid for that repaving comes from the enterprise fund, which is, comes from the landfill. So great to have that done. I checked in with Jason Rosa this morning, who is our Public Works Superintendent and Supervisor and got an update. I was just curious whether there was much storm damage. Obviously, we got a lot of rain yesterday. At least in my district, Southern San Antonio County, it was not quite as much rain as we went south, so other than a few trees and some rocks and debris like that, not too terribly bad. But while I was talking to Jason, just a quick update, we are, if you recall, we allocated $500,000 each to Granite Rock and Don Chapin several months ago to deal with roads throughout the county. We are, some of the, Don Chapin money was shifted to Granite Rock and we are actually just finishing up the monies that we still have remaining from those allocations and currently they're working on Lone Tree Road, which is in great need of getting dealt with. So anyway, once they finish up on Lone Tree, that's pretty much, we'll be finishing up that contract. Also, in my district, continue need to finish up some of the pothole work on Pinot. It seems like it's, it is an ongoing effort as well as dealing with New Idris Road, but we continue to be stretched very thin internally, just in terms of manpower, but that is still something we'll be working on. Other things that have been, that are particularly poured in my district, water, the drought and water issues are, of course, a huge issue throughout our state, but we have local issues with Stonegate that were, some additional issues we're dealing with there. And I thank the county staff for being on top of it. And also I'm talking to the Tres Pinos and the Tres Pinos Water District, and they have some major infrastructure issues that they've been dealing with for years. There's some possibilities of Stonegate and Tres Pinos Water District working together. They're looking at some things. There's also some possibilities of Sunny Slope Water possibly being brought into the mix. And there may be, I know we're going to be looking at this with ARPA funds, but there may be an area where we want to take a look at some parts of the funding to deal with water and to deal with water infrastructure issues in the county. Just a couple other quick things, other than the ad-hocks, et cetera, that we're, I know we're beginning into later. I had a meeting with the Superintendent of the High School, Sean Tenenbaum, I know he's meeting with probably everyone up here as well as others within the community. You know, they've done amazing things at that high school, but it is a very large high school and there's recognition, and there's been recognition for a long time that we really need to seriously look at a second high school. So I met with Sean on that and I know the community's going to be involved in that discussion going forward, but that's going to be a huge thing for our community that we're going to have to deal with. Also, like everyone else up here, met with our lobbyist, Michelle Rubicava. We've already had, you know, one success with the money that we got from, for the parks, $750,000, but we as a board and county staff are meeting with Michelle to see what other things that we can try to tap into with the state because they, I think they continue to have funding, funds up there and there's hope that we can tap into something next, for the next budget year, and we'll be looking at that very closely. And I know we will be looking at extending the contract with Michelle and her firm, I think at the next meeting. And then just lastly, I'll just remind everyone that I have an opening on the Community Action Board, so if anyone is interested from District Four, please let me know. And I'll just remind everyone, I might mention this in ad hoc as well, tomorrow evening at 5 o'clock at Ridge Mark, we have a LAFCO joint session that's going to include both city councils, Hollister, San Juan Batista, as well as the entire Board of Supervisors, as well as the LAFCO board, and it will be a joint session, study session to get more information on what LAFCO is all about. That's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you mentioning LAFCO Supervisor Tiffany because I was a little confused at the dynamics because I didn't know if we can, because technically we have two board members on that committee and I didn't know if there would be a Brown Act issue, but it sounds like it's supposed to be all in attendance. If that's the case, then I'll definitely be there. But my updates are, you know, so basically it's going to be at the end where we talk about the committees, so I'll skip the broadband and tourism. I'll save it for that conversation, but yeah, I received an email from a resident very concerned about Santana Ranch. They actually received some pictures that showed flooding, you know, obviously it was a really, really strong rain that we had these last couple days, so I'm not sure if those are applicable to, you know, because of the amount of rain or because really that Santana Ranch project is, yeah, it maybe hasn't addressed the, you know, the land to make sure that we don't have that kind of impact as far as our other residents and stuff. So I don't know well enough. I'd like to have a discussion about that. I was, I'm yet to be having, so on a separate topic, I'm going to be having a meeting with Clay Kemp. I guess we're supposed to work on a work group for the area agency master plan. So, and then my COG meeting we just had recently, it was actually a pretty short meeting, but the thing that stood out is it looks like we possibly will be in good position for the Cal grant, for a beautification grant of 25 between Sunny Slope and Santana Road. So look for that. And then I also met with the lobbyists. My basic sentiment, because the whole purpose of the meeting was for the lobbyists to get input from the Board of Supervisors as far as what needs we see for our community, and the thing that stood out to me was, has been always, is the need for ongoing development, economic development support. I mean, funding from the state is nice, but I would say the biggest request is really simplifying the process when it comes to regulations. I know one item's going to be on the agenda right now that's going to speak about that, but we basically need to address the unfunded mandates as an ongoing issue. At the end of the day, these unfunded mandates create expectations from our local county without the funds to be able to support them. So, you know, I think that's part of the reason why the motivation even for the charter county conversation. So if there's for us, a way for us to address that, I mean, I know that when SEIU, you know, with the mention of the need that they have, I would love to have more conversations about addressing those needs, but I think the unfunded mandates is what would give us the flexibility with our budget to be able to address these issues as an opportunity. So, and then the last thing I wanted to mention, it's a little bit of frustration of mine is I keep seeing agenda items, basically where you have presentations coming in at the last second. I don't like that. I don't like that at all. It kind of creates this lack of trust element because this is consistently happening. These presentations need to be not only transparent to us as a board, right? We need to have the information so that we prepare for this meeting, but it's also because it needs to be transparent to the public. They should know what we're talking about and they should have that information way ahead of time to make sure that they have, you know, trust is a huge issue in our county and I would say across the state. If we're going to develop a stronger trust, then we have to be more transparent, and I'm not seeing it right now. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to kind of more address the question of what exactly can be shared during this timeframe for board announcements, and so I know that there's been, some questions have raised, been raised. I received a correspondence by mail that was actually questioning what we as supervisors can share and if we're actually addressing things that aren't on the agenda. So Ray and Barbara, I'll go ahead and give you a copy of the correspondence I received so that we have clarification, but just it's probably something we need to address at a future meeting.
Yeah, yeah, if you can do that and then we can agendize that and discuss that openly.
Okay, all right. Nothing further. All right, so let's go ahead and go to the next item, so that would be public hearing. So that'd be item number one, research management, but it looked...
I think we should maybe consider putting a pause for a few minutes until...
Oh, yes. Okay, let's...
Let's take a recess, Madam Chair, and then we'll work on that.
Take a break then, okay.
I'm just right behind them, so.
...session, so take your seats, please. So we'll reopen the hearing at 10:01 since we lost, we had technical difficulties there. All right. Go ahead.
Staff is requesting a continuance till November 9th. There were some changes that we need to incorporate.
Okay. So then, do we need a motion on that or just take that under advisement?
Motion.
Okay, so can I get a motion then to continue this to November the 9th, please? At 9:00 AM?
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we have a second? Oh. No, we had not called it. So public comment for item number one, the public hearing. It will be continued to November the 9th, but are there any questions or concerns from the public?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments.
Okay, so no comment. So I had a first from Supervisor Hernandez. Do I have a second?
Second.
A first and a second, all in favor to continue this to November the 9th?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, 4-0. So then item number two, Joe Paul Gonzalez, our county auditor, clerk, recorder, registrar.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Mike?
Okay, we'll open the hearing at 10:03 for item number two.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors and members of the public. Today is the second public hearing regarding the redistricting of the decennial census, redistricting of the supervisory districts, and today we have the county's demographer, actually a replacement for our regular demographer, we actually have his superior, Dr. Justin We actually have his superior, Dr. Justin Levitt, from National Demographics Corporation. He's gladly stepped in because our demographer actually had a personal crisis occur in his family. And so, thank goodness, we chose a corporation that actually has a very, you know, it's not a one man show. There's depth and breadth to that corporation. And without further ado, I'd like to present Dr. Levitt.
Well, good morning, Chair Gonzalez, members of the board, members of the community who are here and watching on Zoom as well. My name is Dr. Justin Levitt with National Demographics. Dr. Tilton sends his regards. Unfortunately, he did have two family emergencies that happened right back to back in the last week. And so he and his wife have kind of taken a step back to deal with their personal tragedies. And so I'm happy to be here to fill in for him today. And I will do my best to present in his stead. So just to kind of give us a brief overview of where we are and where we are going. The redistricting process is required once every 10 years following the results of the decennial census. Normally, we would be getting underway much earlier in the year. But because of census data delays, the revised or adjusted census data that we are required to use as part of the districting process was not available until late September. In fact, it wasn't until September 21st that we got the first round of prisoner adjusted data. And we even received an update on that on September 27th. Now, following that data release, we've worked really quickly to kind of get the process moving along. We've had four public town halls in October, starting on October 6th and continuing all the way till last Friday on October 22nd. In addition, we've had one kind of staff-led public hearing. But this is going to be our first here at the Board of Supervisors. However, it's not the last. There's going to be an additional two public hearings in November, on November 9th and November 23rd, to continue to look at the draft maps and make adjustments as necessary with the anticipation that we will adopt a map prior to the December deadline for adoption. And so part of the challenge of this process is that the rules and goals of redistricting, the criteria we use have somewhat changed since we went through this 10 years ago. Federal law, that is what the courts require, has more or less stayed the same. So equal population, each district must substantively have the same number of people. The one person, one vote standard. We have a maximum deviation or difference between the largest and smallest of 10%. And if we're above that 10% number, then we have to look at making adjustments to bring that number down under 10%. But we don't have to get to perfect equality like they do for congressional districts. We are allowed some leeway to better represent communities as we'll talk about throughout the rest of the criteria. In addition, we have to look at the Federal Voting Rights Act. Race cannot be the only or even the predominant factor in the creation of a district. It must be one of many factors taken into account as we look toward communities of interest and other criteria. What has really changed for this round of redistricting is this middle column that we've labeled California criterias for counties. This comes from a new law passed last year called the Fair Maps Act. And what the Fair Maps Act now does is it takes all of these factors that we used to balance with each other and we used to weigh them against each other, and now it rank orders them. It says this is the list of priority that we have to consider certain criteria. So first on this list is contiguity. Contiguity is the idea that a district must be one whole piece. You have to be able to walk or drive from one part of that district to every other part of the district without leaving the district. So you can't have a little bit at the far north end and a little bit at the south end of the county that are not touching or not attached to each other. Second, undivided neighborhoods and communities of interest. Now, the law talks about socio-economic geographic areas that should be kept together for the purpose of their effective and fair representation. I'm going to talk more about what that means on the next couple of slides. But in general, if areas kind of share common history, common issues, common problems, then we have to look at keeping that neighborhood together if possible. Third is cities and census designated places, or CDPs. The law specifically calls out these census designated places, as well as your incorporated cities, as communities of interest that need to be kept together. Underneath the general communities of interest, recognizing that a city may have two very distinct neighborhoods or two very distinct parts. But it does want us to try to aim to keep communities like your cities and your CDPs together. Fourth, easily identifiable boundaries is the principle that it should be easy for voters to understand which district they live in. So the extent that we can follow natural and man-made features like roads, canyons, in rural areas, making sure maybe that all the properties along the same road are in one district to make it easy for people to understand which district they live in. And fifth, they define compactness, not bypassing one group of people to get more distant group of people. And this is really where this rank order can play out. If we have a community of interest that makes sense, but it follows a line that's less compact, we have to keep the community of interest together first and then think about compactness later. That's the trade-off that we have to make. If we need to balance population, we may have to divide a community if it works out that that community is too large to be kept together. So this is where the rank order really comes into play. And we have to consider these factors in this order. Now, the Fair Maps Act also contains a prohibition on favoring or discriminating against a political party. So obviously, local elections are nonpartisan in California. Our data set does not include partisanship information and that can't be part of your considerations as we're looking at the different options. Now, there's also this third column, other traditional districting principles. Once we've looked at the state and federal criteria in that rank ordered fashion, we can also consider additional principles that have been recognized by the courts. And so the courts over the years have recognized factors like preserving the core of existing districts or minimizing the voter shift in between election years. Both are going to the same idea that if a voter last elected or last had a vote for a member of the Board of Supervisors in 2018 and they're expecting to have one in 2022, delaying that to 2024 might mean going six years between participating in an election. While another voter switching from a 2024 seat to a 2022 seat may only have two years between getting a chance to voice their opinion for the board. This also goes toward respecting the voter's choices or continuity in office, the principle that the voters of the district of the county have elected a board and that it should be up to the voters to make decisions about whether or not to keep members of the board, not the stroke of a pen on the map. And also, we also do mention future population growth. I warn you not to go too far down this rabbit hole because it's sort of like if you know that there's a massive new project that's going to double the size of a particular neighborhood or community is in the works. We know it's going to happen in the next 10 years. That's one potential reason for a little bit of inequality, population inequality. We can under-populate that region that's going to grow. But simply talking about a specific project that's not going to affect the overall numbers that much, that's not really what future population growth is about. It's aimed at cities that are growing like 100%, 200% over the course of a year or a decade. Looking at the current districts, right now, the current district boundaries are, have a 17.17% or 11% deviation. That's above that 10% maximum. So that does mean that the district boundaries will need to change. And if we look at this at a district-by-district level, we see that District 1 is overpopulated by 10.6%. While Districts 2 and 4 are each underpopulated by approximately 6%. So this is where that number comes from. We're adding that largest and smallest number together to get that 17 percentage difference.
Excuse me, doctor, if I could ask a quick question on that one subject. I understand the balance of population. But it's interesting looking, and I know you'll be getting to it, but when you look at voting age population, it suddenly shifts pretty significantly. But I gather that just outright population is what you have to look at, not voting age population? Is that correct?
That's correct. California law specifically says to use that total population count. And that's following the Supreme Court's guidance over the years on that topic. So it is, so it is that census number that counts everyone. Now, as the board members noted, citizen voting age or the eligible voter population can vary wildly from district to district as well. Even districts with very similar total populations can have very different citizen voting age or eligible voter populations. And so, right now, the county has two, or sorry, three majority, or sorry, two majority Latino districts, districts 3 and 5, as well as two that are equal or close to being equal between whites and Latinos in Districts 1 and 2. So, you know, this matches the overall county's demographics, about 50% white, 50% Latino, with a small Asian and black population. This also gives us our ideal population for each district. So after the adjustments, that target number is 12,876. And I'll just take a second to mention, this doesn't mean that any of the council areas shrunk or board areas shrunk in the last decade. It's just that growth disproportionately happened in certain Board of Supervisors districts. So to talk a little bit more about neighborhoods, when we talk about that criteria of neighborhoods and communities of interest, what we're talking about are two related but very closely related topics, but slightly different. Neighborhoods are smaller. We think of them as the building blocks that go into the districts. And so these could be individual subdivisions. They could be connected. I know it's a separate criteria, but they're very much connected, especially to smaller CDPs, smaller cities and smaller communities throughout the county, even that are, even that don't have a CDP name, but are kind of well-known as being, having a central point where they're focused on. Neighborhoods could also be areas along a particular street or rural road. They could also be areas that share something similar, such as maybe farms that grow the same kind of crops or similar water issues, similar fire issues. You know, however they relate to county government. And that's really the focus point of communities of interest as well. How do they relate to this particular level of governance? Because the school board, the cities, you know, the state, they'll all be looking at different factors that are relevant at that layer of government. And so when we think about communities of interest for the county, we're thinking about those county services and the way that those county services are used in different parts of the county. And so what are the shared issues, the shared characteristics, the shared concerns? The shared, you know, I say socio-economics, but, you know, the numbers help tell the story, but the numbers aren't the story in and of themselves. Just because an area shares some sort of demographic similarity doesn't automatically make it a community. And this is where we need to hear from members of the community and members of the board about what these communities of interest are for San Benito County. Because I'll tell you, everywhere we go, we hear about different issues, depending on the size of the jurisdiction, depending on the rural or urban nature of the jurisdiction, and just depending on local factors. That's what we want to hear as we look at how we can make adjustments to the current map, to redraw the map, to make it work for the next 10 years. And as the law specifically says, what communities benefit from being included within a single district for the purpose of their effective and fair representation? What, how can we draw communities in such a way that empowers different, you know, the different communities, the different neighborhoods throughout the county over the next decade? And just as a kind of very reminder, we're not talking about the politics, or at least not the partisanship here. These are issues, concerns that are nonpartisan or bipartisan, not ones that really are specific to helping a specific political party win. So, looking at some of the tools that we have available for this process, we want to emphasize that we want to hear feedback however people want to give it. Whether people want to just submit a comment in writing or phone in or talk today, give it verbally. But if people do want to draw their own maps or review the maps as they come in, we have tools for that as well. We're going to have a simple map review tool. We call this the interactive web viewer because it lets people use this like Google Maps to search for addresses, to turn on and off different map options, and really explore the details of each draft map or each plan as it's presented. This is really a great way to just learn about the community and learn about the way that, or compare different draft maps as they come in. For people who want to try, take a stab at drawing their own tool, but maybe are just kind of wanting to do something at the kind of straightforward, basic level, we have paper drawing tools. These are available as PDFs on the county's website. And these are great if you don't have internet access because it can be printed out and shared with the community. What they have are total populations of each of the different regions. So you can just get out your phone with the calculator app or do it by hand as you add up the different areas or just coloring your neighborhood or community. We also have a version of this that uses Excel. So when I say uses Excel, what I mean is it does the math for you. So if you're worried about, you know, adding, crossing your ones or, you know, getting your math right, and you know how to, if you have access to Excel, then you can download an Excel spreadsheet with the demographic data from the different population units and it will automatically calculate this all for you. We also have available some more advanced web tools for those of you who have browser access and want to play around with this in detail. District R is our community drawing tool. What it does is it lets you really paint different neighborhoods or communities throughout the, throughout the, throughout the county. One of the things I really like about District R is if you're in the community of interest drawing side of the program, you can draw overlapping communities. So you can say like, I think this is a community, maybe larger area. But also, if I had to subdivide it, this is the kind of smaller communities that make up that larger area. You don't have to pick which community each block is a member of. You can assign it to multiple blocks. I really like that feature on District R because it really helps us understand where the clear borders, the clear differences between communities of interest are, as well as where communities of interest get fuzzy. Because the boundaries between communities of interest may be a little bit unclear. And then for those of you who want the most, you know, advanced tool or most, I guess, complex tool, Maptitude Online Redistricting is a version of the same program that we use as your demographer to draw your district boundaries. So what it does is it lets you go in and draw a plan block by block. You can start with the current districts or start with a blank map and make adjustments until you balance the populations. Now, this one makes you force a choice. You have to choose to assign it in one of the two, one of five districts. But if you really want to get into the weeds on the data as well as see just where the census blocks are and how many people are in each one, Maptitude Online Redistricting is the way to do that. And people who discover this program often can't stop at one. If you take the time to learn it, we often get two or three maps at least from the same person because they get, they just have a lot of fun playing with the map after you learn how to do it. It has a bit of a learning curve. I have to warn people that even with the help, we do have a lot of help guides for this because we know it's complex, but it does have a bit of a learning curve even with that. And so, just to kind of reiterate this final point, we really do hope to hear from you however you want to provide information. So we welcome everything from a simple comment or, in writing, all the way up to a full map submission. And so I look forward to our. And so I look forward to our conversation today. This is a pre-map hearing, so we haven't drawn any prospective maps yet. Our goal will be to show those at the next board meeting in November. So we're looking for the feedback and testimony today that we can take back with us and put into drawing those draft maps. And when I say today, I do mean today, because we actually do have a deadline today, at 5:00 PM, I believe, for any submissions that will be used in the preparation for the first round of draft maps in November. And I'll emphasize that's the first round. So if you get something in after today, or you want to go back and play with it a bit more, you will have another chance to submit prior to November 23rd. But for us to consider it the first meeting in November, we're going to need it today, in order to get it processed, drawn in, and ready to go for that meeting. This is mostly driven by deadlines, that we need to have things posted so far in advance of that meeting, so that the community has time to review the maps before those, that board meeting. So I'm happy to answer questions about the districts, about the process, or about any of the data I showed today. Otherwise, I look forward to our conversation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My understanding is currently we have 13 maps that have been submitted from the public, and those will be reviewed at the next meeting. If there's no other questions.
Madam Chair, a quick question. Joe Paul, at this point in the process, what is the role, just for clarification, of those of us here as supervisor? Do you want to get input from us at this early stage, or are we still, at this point, just kind of sitting back, letting, getting public input, and obviously eventually weighing in, but I'm just curious where we come in? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. We would welcome feedback today from both the community and the board on the direction, on direction to draw the draft maps. So I would say, in terms of neighborhoods, or communities, or principles that you would like us to consider, it would be fine to talk about that today. And then we come back, doing our best job, trying to incorporate that into additional maps that, you know, add to the conversation. And then, you know, you can review those at the next meeting, but we certainly welcome direction today.
I have a different question that just occurred to me. How do you, when you're looking at this, in our community, we're dominated by, you know, one city, Hollister, and then there's unincorporated areas of the county. Although many of us live outside of the city, our address is actually in the, you know, the same address. But I'm just, my question is, is, do you, in your process, do you try to get everyone that's actually in the city limits of Hollister within a certain district, as opposed to then having some of that bleed over into unincorporated areas of the county? I'm just, how do you play that into it in a situation like ours?
Yeah, I think that it's very true that, you know, we have to look at, you know, we have to look at the current cities, but that criteria comes after communities of interest. So if we think about communities of interest first, as being more than just the city itself, but including that unincorporated area, and we can talk about, we can talk about how. Or if the city is large enough that it has to be divided anyway, maybe it, or it has to be divided for Voting Rights Act reasons, or for other reasons. There's many reasons why we might divide a big city, especially one like Hollister that dominates the county. And just to give another example, you could draw two entire Board of Supervisors districts in the city of San Diego proper, but the county always ends up drawing at least three into the city because of voting rights and other neighborhood communities of interest concerns. So that would be something that we could definitely look at as part of understanding the different communities in the city.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead. Supervisor Hernandez.
Yes, thank you. So I know that the drawing of the maps are based off of the lines, you know, based on the census numbers, but obviously there's things that are changing constantly, and development is one of them. So, you know, you could technically have a certain district drawn up where it might even seem pretty even with the rest of the district's population-wise, but then all of a sudden you have a development where houses are being built, and people are moving in between December and then even the next election cycle. What do you, I mean, is there a way to address that? Because ultimately, you can end up having an extra, you know, 300 to 3,000 voters. This depends on the size, you know, I just know that like the Santana Ranch project is a huge project, and, you know, I imagine there's going to be a lot of people moving into those houses before the next election, and if they register, that changes the dynamics of the actual district. So what can be done to, at least, you know, I know you can't change, because the census map is based off of the population when you got it, but, you know, is there any way to address that?
Thank you for the question. You, of course, can slightly under-populate a district if you know that there's going to be future growth or development there. And if you know that an area in particular is going to grow quite a bit because of a large project or development, then you might either consider under-populating that area, or dividing that area between two supervisory districts, so that that growth is shared over two communities, if that makes sense. But I would also caution, we've seen a lot of cities over the years, or counties over the years, that have said, we're going to grow massively in this area, and then they haven't accounted for smaller projects, infill growth, or other development elsewhere in the county. And so, where they think they're going to get all their growth ends up being a sizable chunk of the growth, but maybe not quite as big as they expected. So we, you know, we can certainly take that into consideration in terms of that population, but, or through dividing it up, but you can't exceed that 10% deviation limit, and I'd also caution about being too eager to under-populate just one area.
Any further questions?
Thank you. No, that was it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, and I don't have any real specifics, but the only comment I would make in looking at the existing districts, and I'm sure this, well aware of this, but some of the districts, obviously in order to equalize population 10 years ago, you know, they're very difficult to follow, in terms of, you know, you'll have fingers that will, you know, come through, you know, for example, you know, you'll have a district from San Juan Batista, Supervisor Cosmikys, that, you know, comes into Hollister. You have, you know, my district that may incorporate other, anyway, they, when you look at just from a geographical standpoint, it doesn't make sense. But you're doing it from a population standpoint, I understand that. But, you know, obviously, I would just encourage you as much as you can within the criteria you have to follow to try to get it, get these districts more compact. I realize that's not the number one criteria, but it's just so much easier for citizens than to know what district they're part of. I mean frankly, there's parts of my district that I'm still a little unclear on, and I have to go back and look at the map, and you have to check, and this and that. So, anyway, that would just be my comment. Thank you.
We are, we're taking notes to ensure that the comments of the board are incorporated in the map drawing.
So I have no further questions. Anybody else? Nope. Okay.
We're just open to the public.
Okay, so let's go to a good public comment, please.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, you can press star nine on your phone, or the raise your hand icon on your screen.
Okay, so I guess there's no further comments. Okay. Thank you then. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes. Supervisor Hernandez.
I was just going to make one final comment. I was kind of hesitating, but even just for the sake of thought, I know that right now, or, you know, prior to today, basically, these lines were drawn based off of, which kind of piggybacking off what Supervisor Tiffany had mentioned, is to a certain extent, you have districts kind of touching the city because of the fact that they, you know, they needed to increase their population representation, so that way there's a little bit more of a, you know, because I know it's the 10%, right? So you can't be too far out of 10%. So long and short, is you have, you know, like District Two touching the city, you have District Four touching the city, and so, and that seems fair. I would just caution that there's not too much change as far as that goes, because just, I know, like, as an example, and this is just my thoughts on the rural nature, it's very different, the rural needs are different than the city needs. And if that changes too drastically, then all of a sudden you have under-representation for the rural communities. So just, those are just food for thought, that's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Thank you for that comment.
Thank you. That's it? Okay.
Madam Chair, do we have to close the public hearing?
Yeah, if you want to close the public comment, and then just, I think you've already provided staff directions, so that's all we need.
Was that enough direction for you?
Sure was. Thank you very much.
All right, then. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing then on this. 10:35. All right. Thank you. Back to the regular agenda. We're at item number three.
So we have Dr. Geller on the phone, as well as on Zoom, and as well as Tracy Beltin, our Health and Immunization Services Director.
Okay.
Tracy?
Yes, good morning. Dr. Geller is going to lead the presentation today. Dr. Geller?
Good morning. We wanted to provide you an update on a variety of activities, including our vaccination program and incident rates in the county at present, recent days. Next slide, please. So, we continue to see a gradual decline from our peak of Delta variant recently, moving in the right direction, perhaps not as quickly as we had hoped, but, you know, continuing sustained decline. We have 80 active cases presently in the community. Of our hospitalizations, as previously, the overwhelming majority are among, unfortunately, unvaccinated individuals. Deaths, we have a 74 total number of deaths thus far, again, largely within the unvaccinated community. Next slide, please. This provides a incidence rate by vaccine status. And the blue curve here are among individuals who have been vaccinated, the orange one, the unvaccinated. And this just reinforces the points in the prior slide, that there's a big, very big, significant difference between those who are protected by the vaccine versus those who remain unvaccinated. Next slide, please. This is an overview of our current vaccination rates. We are really within a very close range of California statewide level of immunization. And that's a great accomplishment, that I think Tracy and the team, with our variety of partners in the community, the foundation, of course, we've really pulled that up over the last couple of months, slowly but surely. And it's worth noting that California is amongst the best performing states in the Union. So, you know, we're doing as well almost as anyone in the nation, with the exception of a few jurisdictions that are up in the 80s already. We still have work to do, as you can see in the partially vaccinated. That is an emphasis within our outreach. We'll discuss that in a little bit. But we want to complete those vaccinations very much. Next slide, please. This breaks down the vaccination rates by race and ethnicity, and I'm really pleased to, again, communicate with the board that we have pretty much eliminated any concern about inequities. We are, of course, in a Latinx-majority community, but we know that there are significant socioeconomic health access and other inequities and impediments to getting health care in general, and in health status. So we are actually doing better within the Latinx community than in the white community. Clearly, we need to continue to improve in both. But a major concern about the unequal distribution of vaccination and the opportunity to get vaccinated, I think we've handled that very well. Next slide, please. This gives you a breakdown of vaccination by major age groups in the county. We still have work to do across all of them. I'd really like to see, obviously, the elderly community, who tend to have multiple, what we call comorbidities, or pre-existing chronic diseases, some of which are cardiovascular or lung-related, and make them at much greater risk, if infected, of a severe course of illness requiring hospitalization. So that is clearly an imperative for us. But we need to pull all of these up, step by step, over the coming weeks and months. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn over to my colleague to discuss the vaccine rollout that's being planned and implemented.
Mary, are you on? Pharmacist Mary White. Yes, good morning, everyone. Thank you. All right, next slide, please. All right, so as most of you probably already know, there have been some recent FDA and CDC approvals regarding COVID-19 vaccination for boosters. And in addition, we soon expect approvals for the pediatric population, which would be the five to 11-year-olds. So starting with the booster approvals, just a quick summary. Back in September on the 24th, the CDC, the FDA, and the Western State Scientific Safety Review Work Group both recommended and approved Pfizer vaccines for boosters. And then just this past week, on the 22nd, both Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson were also approved to be able to be given as boosters. So regarding, you know, who's eligible for booster vaccinations, in summary, for the language put forth by the CDC and California Department of Public Health, a Pfizer or Moderna booster dose is recommended if you've received your second dose at least six months ago. For people who are 65 and older, or 18 and older, who live in, who live in long-term care settings, 18 and older who have underlying medical conditions, or at increased risk due to social inequities, or who work or live in high-risk settings. For Johnson &amp; Johnson, booster doses are recommended if you've received your first dose at least two months ago, and you are 18 and older. So bundled in with this approval was also approved, the ability to mix and match booster doses. So this will give us much better flexibility. And really what this means is that for, you're no longer bound to have to receive the matching vaccine. So the booster does not have to match the same type of vaccine you received for your primary series. So for example, if you received a Johnson &amp; Johnson, you can receive a booster with Johnson &amp; Johnson again, or a Pfizer or Moderna, and vice versa, and all the ways to mix and match those. Next slide, please. This is just to remind and highlight that booster doses are available through all current channels, which include healthcare providers, clinics, neighborhood pharmacies, public health clinics as well. Anyone can visit the MyTurn website, or call to make an appointment to find a nearby vaccine clinic that's convenient for you. And note, many of those places also welcome walk-ins. Next slide, please. So this is just a visual about the process timeline for vaccine approval by the state and federal government, kind of their rollout. So basically, Pfizer COVID vaccine is being reviewed for approval for its use in children five to 11 years of age. The advisory bodies to the FDA and the CDC are meeting respectively today and early next week. The VERPAC is the advisory committee to the FDA, and the ACIP is the advisory committee to the CDC, and they both need to do separate reviews and input. If all goes well, we anticipate formal approval towards the beginning of November, is what we're being told. All right, next slide, please. right, next slide, please. So, this slide is actually a state slide, and it just reflects their process for the pediatric vaccine rollout, um, but I'm going to summarize. Um, so to prepare for the approval of the pediatric vaccine and facilitate quick shipments, the California Department of Public Health, or CDPH, used a, uh, sort of preorder allocation process just for this initial shipment only. Um, CDPH allocated amounts to counties for preordering, and they divided it into three waves. But note that all three waves of the preorder vaccine will be shipped and received within the same first week of November, um, as long as the approvals by the FDA and CDC go as we anticipate. San Benito County was allocated a preorder total amount of 1,200 doses, but keep in mind, this does not in any way impact our ability to order more vaccine. It was just a way for the state to begin, um, those deliveries immediately upon approval. You know, they wanted to be able to be poised to start deliveries literally the day that they get approval. So that was just a, a quick way for them to be able to do that. So after this initial preorder rollout period, vaccine providers will be able to immediately submit orders for additional, uh, vaccine supply as they normally do, um, for all COVID vaccines at this time. So in other words, um, it was only for this initial preorder week that allocations were made by CDPH. Um, after that, it will be business as usual, and we and all providers can order, um, whatever we need, um, when we need it. Um, CDPH has reassured us that there is plenty of pediatric Pfizer vaccine available. Um, so I think that's it for me for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. So just a brief update on our vaccine incentive programs. Um, so you're all aware that we did have a first-dose vaccine gift card incentive through our public health services, and we did exhaust those funding, that funding, however, we were able to request, uh, more funding from the immunization brands, and we were granted $60,000, um, to have a round two of this funding. And so we will be putting out a press release, um, hopefully today, um, so with the dates of when, um, when we, when we exhausted the funding, and then it will start over again for people who have got first doses, excuse me, from, uh, after the, the round one was exhausted. And so look for that, they will be offered at our Public Health Services Office on Trespinos Road. Um, and then our second dose, uh, fully vaccinated incentive, cash incentive programs, we have, uh, $116,800 left of this voucher program. Um, you can see the increase by 16.8 increase since the August 10th, when the incentive program started. And so, uh, it's for the board's consideration to, um, extend this program. Um, this was authorized by the board, and we wanted to provide this data. Um, we do anticipate that the, we forecast that the cash incentive funding will be exhausted on or about November 12th. Uh, we did a partnership with the Community Foundation, um, they have, um, uh, there will be a $500 drawing for, that comes out of, um, this month of, from October 1st through November 5th, um, and there will be one winner of $500 through the Community Foundation, and they will announce the winner. And then, I just wanted to provide a quick, um, COVID-19 testing update, just reminding the county individuals and anyone who may work here or live here, that we still have the testing at the Hazel Hawkins Community Clinic, um, Sunday through Thursday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, walk-ins are available, and you can also schedule an appointment through LHI on the website. And then outreach efforts, just wanted to provide a brief update. Dr. Geller, where are you going to lead this slide?
Sure. So, uh, we continue on an ongoing basis to, uh, increase our outreach and diversify the strategies we're utilizing to engage and educate members of our community about the state of the epidemic and, uh, the opportunity to protect themselves. A billboard has been finalized, and that'll be up, uh, November 1st, uh, focused on, uh, the opportunity to be vaccinated and avoid disease. We are securing, uh, dates to actually film an educational video for the public, uh, and obviously that'll be pushed out through our own website and through social media. We're collaborating with the San Benito County Office of Education, uh, to distribute an all-resident mailer. Uh, we hope that'll go out, uh, on November 1st or shortly thereafter, again, educating, uh, parents in particular upon, about the opportunity to get their children vaccinated and protected. Uh, public health continues to work through and with various, uh, key local partners, uh, including the media, obviously Hazel Hawkins Memorial Hospital, um, who has a new chief clinical officer, we're very much looking forward to working with her, as well as, uh, continuing to work with the leadership team there, uh, the foundation, uh, the Farm Bureau, and, uh, the Office of, uh, the Youth Alliance. So, uh, the messaging continues to focus on not just COVID-19 at this point, uh, but also on the imperative to get protected against influenza. We really, uh, protected last year from, uh, uh, the usual influenza seasonal epidemic that occurs because of all of the, uh, protective and preventive measures, the masking, the distancing, avoiding social congregation. Uh, and there is some expectation in the epidemiological community that we may see a pretty robust, uh, vaccine season, uh, uh, excuse me, flu and other respiratory, uh, pathogens season. Uh, we expect those to become present again. Uh, and we really don't have an understanding at present of what co-infection, uh, with influenza and, uh, the virus that causes COVID-19 might look like. Um, and that's a real concern. Uh, if an individual, uh, has contracted, uh, the COVID virus, uh, that's already compromising their ability to breathe if they become clinically severe, uh, and then superimposing on that, or having COVID superimposed upon, uh, an existing infection with influenza, uh, there's a lot of concern in the clinical and public health community that that could be a very challenging, uh, clinical care picture. And so we really very much want to encourage even particularly among those who, uh, for whatever reason have not yet been vaccinated for, uh, against COVID-19, to please get their influenza shot this year. This is really not a year or a winter where you don't want to be protected against influenza if you're not also protected against, uh, COVID. Next slide, please. So we're going to, uh, provide, uh, an update on, uh, what we're seeing in the schools at present. Next slide, please. So this provides you, uh, a school summary with, uh, the graphic on the right is number of cases that have occurred, you know, across the different schools. Uh, we've had 75 cases reported by schools to public health, uh, since the, uh, beginning of the last week of September. Uh, these were mostly among students, but there were a handful of staff cases. Uh, most of these were not related to an outbreak. Uh, and in terms of, uh, the timing among the five to 18, you can see that actually, uh, we didn't get a huge bump, uh, when school went into full force, uh, from the midsummer, uh, pretty similar, uh, incidence rate. Next slide, please. This provides you a picture of those cases by grade, um, and you, you can see it's really all over the map from, uh, the, the near-middle schoolers in, in the sixth grade, kindergarten. Um, it's a substantial distribution, uh, across the entire, uh, age strata, uh, and, uh, that's probably to be expected. We didn't expect, uh, there to be any necessary clustering by level of grade, uh, at least at this juncture. Obviously, we're going to continue monitoring this and, and sharing this information with the community at large and the board. Next slide, please.
That concludes our presentation. Um, we, if there's no questions for us, or if you want to hold questions till the end, uh, CAO, Assistant CAO Edgar Nolasco is going to present on the San Benito County Testing Mandate Act.
Madam Chair, I had a question.
Yes, Supervisor Hernandez. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, uh, Ms. White, I had mentioned, and I was reading, I was kind of confused because I was reading through her, through the, uh, slides, and this is one of the presentations that we caught last second, but, and I saw there was added data that was different than what we initially got. But anyways, um, she said approval, when everything on that language, and I mean looking on the CDC website, it says recommended. So I'm trying to make sure that we're not confusing the public. Are you saying approved to be distributed? Or are we saying legally approved and therefore no longer falls under, or basically is not no longer considered experimental, therefore it's no longer under the emergency use authorization? The law?
Hi, yes, thank you. So for both the recent, um, recommendations and decisions regarding booster doses and, and the coming pediatric, those are, um, emergen- still under emergency use authorization as far as it impacts the way we are able to procure and administer those vaccines. The ordering process, approval of ordering process is just in reference to, um, the state system for us to put orders into the system to request vaccine to be delivered to us. But as far as the, um, the, uh, status of the vaccines themselves, the boosters and what the coming pediatric doses will be under emergency use authorization.
I could just add to that Supervisor, just, uh, to mention, uh, the emergency use authorization, uh, is about finalizing, uh, safety. Uh, it occurs after all of the safety, that, that validity and checks have been completed on a scientific basis. Once that's approved, as we expect now for the pediatric vaccines, uh, it's not, uh, uh, really experimental. Uh, experimental suggests that we don't know the outcomes, uh, we, there are risks that have not been identified. Uh, so, uh, none of the vaccines that, uh, are currently being administered to the public in the US, or anticipated for our children in coming months, are experimental once they've completed the combined FDA and CDC review process, which is an evidence-based scientific evaluation of, uh, the safety profiles and any risks of new vaccines.
I, I appreciate that, Doctor, and yeah, it was a, yeah, in, in a roundabout way, you're basically saying, from what I'm hearing is, is hypothetically, once it get, goes through the process, then it will be no longer experimental. But as of late, it is still considered experimental, right? So we can hypothetical all day long. So I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying is, this is really, really important for the public consumption. They hear approved, they think that means it's no longer experimental, it's super safe, there's no problems with it. And if that was the case, and it's funny because I, I kind of brought this up earlier, or a prior board meeting where we basically had an issue, uh, with basically support, you know, when it comes down to these mandates, and I've argued this, that I know there's liability coming. But my point is, is there was a mandate that was supposedly going to be presupposed by the federal government under Joe Biden's, uh, presidency where he, he was going to roll this out, and to, as of late, we still haven't heard any official declaration, not only of a, of a mandate from the federal level, but ultimately where these vaccines are no longer considered experimental. So all of this is just basically hypothetical, and that's really important because the main element of emergency use authorization that's really important is that people have choice, right? Because of that, because of the Nuremberg Code within the EUA, it basically guarantees you don't have to take this if you don't want to, uh, and, and it's hard to force anybody to do it when considered experimental. But once it gets taken off, then I guess it would, it would be a different, uh, situation, but that's not the case today. And I feel like every conversation we've had with the public has been assuming that this is not experimental, and that's just not true.
Uh, Supervisor, just to, just to clarify, from a clinical, a public health, a safety point of view, the vaccines that are currently being delivered and have been delivered to the American population, uh, that will be delivered to children in coming months, uh, have passed through that safety review that has been completed, a- and they, uh, at that point, are not considered experimental. Uh, no one uses the term in, uh, medicine or public health, uh, uh, on these vaccines, that they are, they are experimental in nature. Uh, they're not experimental. They've had proven efficacy and proven safety. Uh, the data is absolutely unequivocal, and the evidence is overwhelming that these are safe and effective. So, uh, again, uh, from a clinical and public health point of view, uh, these vaccines are not experimental.
Yeah. Well, and I, I don't want to, I, I, I respect your opinion, Doctor, I'm obviously not a doctor, um, but if that was 100% true, then the E, then these would no longer be under the EUA. That's my main point. I- if it was that clear, then they would no longer be EUA, but they are. So that kind of, that changes the dynamic. Again, even for the sake of public transparency and, and for them to really understand what they're dealing with, um, that, you know, the, the EUA still stands under, for these vaccines.
And I, I believe the question has been asked, and the question has been answered. Um, can we move on from that point, Supervisor Hernandez?
Definitely, Madam Chair, yes, I'm not, I'm not going to.
Okay.
Uh, beat it up anymore. But, um, so I had a question, Doctor. So we mentioned, um, the death and the, basically the, um, the infection rate. I would like to know how many of these cases had underlying health conditions. Um, I don't think we ever hear that, you know, as it pertains to, you know, people had been hospitalized or even the death count. Um, and where are the major breakthrough cases? I know you highlighted there was only two that was vaccinated. Um, but I think even just for clarity, that's important information to understand.
Uh, the breakthrough cases have been among individuals, uh, when it required hospitalization. Uh, you're absolutely correct in your intuition that, uh, these were individuals who had, in, in, uh, both cases, um, significant pre-existing, uh, morbidity or illness, uh, what we refer to as these prior, uh, potentially, uh, complicating health conditions. Uh, so that is, that is correct perception. Uh, among the, uh, the breakthrough cases generally, um, as I mentioned during the presentation, uh, the large majority of these, uh, have involved a very self, what we call a self-limited illness, a mild cold-like illness, uh, in which someone who's vaccinated, you know, may have a little, a fever, or feel under the weather and fatigue. Uh, it's transient, it passes, and they recover typically without needing to go to the hospital at
Thank you, Doctor. Um.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, um.
So, those are my final questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
To ask from Dr. Geller and, um, Tracy, is that if your PowerPoint presentation can, from now on, be included in the agenda packet. I understand sometimes you have to have a, an updated number that comes in the day or so, and so you can always give us an update. But the show that we received is, is, it doesn't even look like the same, um, PowerPoint that I received this morning at 8:00 AM. And so, on the line of transparency and deadlines for agenda, I'm going to ask that you really work to get the PowerPoint to us on a timely basis. Um, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I make a couple of comments, and I have a couple of questions. Um, first of all, as far as the timeliness, I, I, I understand your point, and, and, uh, ideally, I agree with you. I know they're trying to get the data as, as recent as possible.
Right.
So obviously, um, I, it may not be possible to get it, uh, the current information, um, you know, a week in advance, obviously, but I, I understand your point. Um, just one comment, and then I, uh, or a couple of comments. First of all, um, you know, I just, I have to say that it's very frustrating to continue to hear, uh, talk about experimental or trying to talk up underlying conditions, um, all trying to undermine us, what we're really trying to do, which is keep public safe, get as many people vaccinated as possible. These are not experimental vaccines. Dr. Geller, I think, made that extremely clear. Um, and I think every, it's, it's a disservice to our county to continue to try to put out misinformation about that kind of a thing, and it undermines what we're trying to do, keep the public safe. As far as underlying conditions, yes, there are underlying conditions. Um, but for every person I've heard that hundred, had an underlying condition, I've also heard of people that were young, healthy, and had no underlying condition, and yet they're no longer living because they were not vaccinated. Seventy out of 72 people that have died in our county were unvaccinated. And so, sure, some of those, uh, people were, probably did have underlying conditions. But when you have 70 out of 72, that's well over 90%, clearly, there's no question, if you're vaccinated, you are protecting yourself from hospo- hospitalization and death. And I just, we just keep having to remind people And I just, we just keep having to remind people of that. Just a, just turning on a couple of other things I quickly wanted to mention, when I was looking at the numbers, uh, that were presented, although we, um, we have done, I think, a great job of making sure that, um, all segments of our community have been, uh, have been vaccinated and particularly, as was mentioned, the, the Latino, uh, community, I think we've done a, you know, it's, it's great to see the numbers, but I did note, make note that of those that are partially vaccinated, there's a higher percentage of the Latino community that remains partially vaccinated. So, um, that continues to be an area that when we're pushing for the partially vaccinated people, that we should particularly, uh, look at that when we're looking at outreach. Um, also I noticed as far as unvaccinated, for the, the over sixty-five age population is, uh, if I recall, it was something like twenty-four percent. So, um, some of the people that are most susceptible, uh, because of age are some of the, you know, age-wise, um, you know, unvaccinated. And so that also is an area that we need to particularly target. Um, and then, um, obviously when we're talking about outreach, um, we, we need to be particular mindful of how we're going to get the word out for the, the five to eleven years olds because that's coming up, as was pointed out, very quickly, and I think that's a critical, um, area for us to, to address, uh, make sure that those children are vaccinated as, uh, as quickly as we can. Uh, last comment, um, with the incentives being projected, um, vaccine incentives being projected be exhausted by November twelfth, um, I would like to suggest that we should have on the agenda, on the November ninth agenda, uh, an item so that the board can consider whether we want to continue, you know, the incentives, whether it be the current one or some other incentive, so at least that can be discussed. So I would ask that we get that on the agenda and hopefully get support for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Tiffany, if I could just build out on, on your comments and observations. Underlying conditions, I think it's very important, uh, for the public to understand that hypertension, high blood pressure, if you're being treated for high blood pressure, that elevates your risk of a severe course with this infection. Uh, if you have asthma or other pulmonary illness, uh, if you have any sort of cardiological condition, uh, if you are a cancer patient and receiving, uh, immunosuppressive or immunological therapy, uh, that could elevate your risk. So there are very common, diabetes, uh, puts you at elevated risk of a severe course. These are highly prevalent conditions in our community. Uh, I think the U.S. figure is that approximately sixty-five or seventy percent of the American population has one chronic condition at least by age fifty, and by age sixty-five, that's usually two or more chronic conditions. So, um, when we say that there are underlying chronic, uh, uh, pre-existing illness in an individual who had a bad course with this infection, we need to understand that there's a very, very large segment of our population and our community as a whole, because unfortunately, uh, chronic diseases are highly prevalent in, in our community and as the state and the nation as a whole. Just wanted to emphasize that, that we're not talking about esoteric conditions here. We're talking about things that, uh, it'd be hard to find a family where there isn't a member of the family who has one of these conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Hold on Supervisor Hernandez, Supervisor Cosmicki had a question.
Oh, I have comments, not a question.
Okay, comment, go ahead, it's okay.
Um, yeah, just as far as the, the presentation part, I disagree on that. Normally I would agree, you know, if, if it's a presentation that's not a, um, updated daily sort of situation, but in this case, two-thirds of the presentation are numbers that are, you know, that are fluid and that, you know, if we get the, the presentation a week before, then the presentation is utterly pointless. Um, so I, I just disagree on that. I, I, I don't mind if we get like a portion of the presentation, maybe there's the, the school part in there, I think that's pretty much the only part that, um, maybe we could have had that a week ago, but the, if you look through the presentation, the vast majority of it are numbers and, and again, they're changing every day. So I appreciate getting a presentation the day of, it makes a lot of sense. Um, the vaccination rate looks good to me from compared with where we were. This is a area where we were pretty far behind the state for a while, and now we're pretty much lined up with the state. So, um, I just, um, really glad to see that we're making progress and want to see us continue that momentum. I appreciate all the staff's work on outreach and the incentive program to me has been clearly a success as far as getting our numbers bumped up and helping us along the way. Um, I agree about the incentive program, so if, if I, if needed, I'll be the second person to support putting that on the agenda November ninth. Um, and then the outreach, appreciate the staff's work on outreach, the billboard's something I requested in particular, so thank you, that's coming pretty quick here. Um, and then I agree on the, the school communities. That really, to me, that is the next phase where we really need to be focused on working with our school partners and making sure that we're all on the same page, um, all the school districts are on the same page as far as, um, you know, getting the word out on the importance of the vaccine, uh, putting out, um, you know, trying to lessen the impact of misinformation and propaganda that's out there. And really just, um, to me, we really have to have an aggressive effort with our school-age children to get them vaccinated because that, otherwise we could find ourselves, um, remember in, uh, I guess it would have been in the spring, you know, we were down to zero, we all thought we were kind of through this thing. It's all, if there's ebbs and flows to this whole thing, so that's, it's always possible that we could be, you know, that we could see numbers go up again, and I certainly don't want to see that. Um, as far as school goes, since, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, we had, you know, even today here at the beginning of our meeting about the, um, I do want to briefly address this, the Spring Grove situation, unfortunate and sad, a young girl collapsed at the school, very serious, was lifelighted to Stanford. My thoughts and prayers are with that young girl and her family, that's first and foremost. Um, but we're, with regard to the, the criticism from the superintendent's husband, and I think that's, you know, something that we should be clear that we're pointing out when we get up and make these public statements, that you're the, you're the husband of the person who's really, um, under, uh, uh, under the microscope here. The public deserves to know that. Um, and as someone who came from a long career in media, I'd like to note the press release from the county on the situation was perfectly appropriate. Um, you know, there were questions about, you know, information and, but everything in the press release was accurate, um, so, you know, it was a very serious situation. Somebody was lifelighted from a public place, you know, there's a lot of speculation going around. It's really our role, um, to, to make sure that we're transparent about, um, these situations and to let the public know that we as a county do have a role here. Um, there's contact tracing that's involved, for instance, and I appreciate all the work that our public health staff has done in following up with that whole situation and the contact tracing with the outbreak that occurred at the science camp and then, um, this young girl, um, having an unfortunate medical situation. We didn't release any, um, child's identity, there are no privacy issues here, the county has every right to be involved and concerned due to the implications with wider community health contact tracing and the condition of that poor girl. Um, and I had a parent contact me, so, you know, um, the, the Saturday, Friday, Saturday before, um, this, this terrible situation occurred at the school, I had a parent contact me, very concerned about alarming messaging from the superintendent of that district as far as their approach to our COVID policies and the state's policies. And I've requested that county public health department do a thorough investigation of that messaging from the, the superintendent principal that was really unfortunate, that talked about Spring Grove in particular, looking at a workaround to the state's COVID policies regarding schools. And I want to make it clear from my perspective as one supervisor, the county will not tolerate rogue school districts defying rules meant to keep the wider community safe and the school, school community there as safe as possible. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I would just like to apologize to the community for Supervisor Cosmicki's comments. They were out of line, they were completely inaccurate. I mean, it's funny because my question to him, which I don't expect him to answer, I don't want him to answer honestly because it doesn't matter, um, is, did you even talk to the superintendent of the school district? Did you even address the concerns with her if you really cared about this little girl, which is tragedy that this is even becoming publicized? The, to be clear, the NICSIL report said it was a COVID-related emergency, and then our public health officer basically put out that sentiment, all of a sudden takes an interview where he says, "The child did have COVID, but the cause of a respiratory collapse is still under investigation." So was it COVID-related or was it not? Why would we put out a statement when we're under, so it's creating a lot of presuppositions? The reality is, is this little girl had nothing to do with the three, there was contract tracing of those three, it was a separate situation, she didn't even test positive till way after, obviously after this emergency. So all of a sudden, there was a convoluted basically reality. Let's put it this way, there's a reason why the PIO position is changing because that messaging was failure and proves that if we're not careful and if the board majority doesn't make a decision about even our messaging, then we could create more damage than we can actually solve, right? You know, the, the issues that were, that happened, you know? Right now, we basically have a school district, and for Supervisor Cosmicki to say a rogue district, we have no authority over the school district, zero, to make that statement. It's fictitious and by default, it's only intent on creating division. And I'm just calling it as, as it is. You know, when it comes down to the comment that, that Supervisor Tiffany had mentioned, there's nothing wrong with telling the truth. Actually, I would think that would be an actual virtue is to be truthful. What I shared was truthful and public health literally articulated, yes, you are right, Supervisor Hernandez. So when you're talking about misinformation Supervisor Tiffany, that's really a big letdown because you told me in person, Peter, I really want to work with you. That's not someone who wants to work with you. Someone says, we need to, you know, in my home, my son or daughter know that they don't lie to me. And lying isn't just not telling, you know, basically outright lying, it could be not telling me the whole truth. That's what we're doing to the public, we're not telling them the whole truth. And it's been honestly a big disservice to our community because it's only divided us further. So those are my only comments, Madam Chair, I had to answer those.
Supervisor, may I, may I just respond to your, uh, comment very briefly? I just want to share that, um, the content of the press release was valid, uh, it was factual. Uh, the use of the term COVID-related, uh, was unfortunate in that it created a misperception. When we said it was, uh, and again, this is our PIO did this, he did this in, uh, you know, uh, desire to move rapidly and communicate with county residents, uh, the COVID-related is to the fact that there was an outbreak at this school, the science camp, there were three cases, and, uh, this child was among them. And so if we had not, uh, communicated to our community at large in a transparent manner that this child, uh, very unfortunate, I concur with you, it's tragedy, uh, but if we had not communicated that this was at a school where there was a recent outbreak and that this child was one of the cases in that outbreak, uh, from my point of view, it would have been negligent, uh, public health negligence, uh, because we owe the community all of the facts, uh, and we need to be transparent. Uh, so the, the actual wording is COVID-related, and I, you know, I clarified this in the interviews I did, uh, three media interviews the following days, that, uh, only the clinicians at Packer Children's Hospital can identify what the cause of this poor child's collapse was. And then of course, the parents that need to, as their, as her legal guardian authorize or not, uh, the disclosure of that personal health information. But in terms of the communication, um, I can only imagine that the outrage, uh, that would have occurred, uh, had, uh, we not in the public health, uh, let the community at large know that this was at a school where there was a recent outbreak and that this child was involved. That was the underlying intent. Uh, the wording could have been crafted better, I, I grant you that. Uh, and I endeavored on my part at least to correct that in the subsequent days. Uh, and moving forward, I can assure you, uh, I've, I've asked the PIO to share with me, uh, all sensitive communications on any outbreak, whether COVID-related or not, just to make sure that the precision of the wording, uh, could not offer any potential misinterpretation. But certainly, I, I remain firm in, in the fact that we did need to share this with the community. Uh, everyone has the right in the community to know that, uh, a child collapsed at a school where there was a COVID outbreak in recent weeks. Thank you.
Doctor, doctor, I, um, a hundred percent agree and appreciate your, your earnestness. Um, I definitely don't want to disrespect your position. Um, my, and I would agree with you that this, that, uh, the message probably didn't need to happen. Um, my biggest point with everything that I said is, if we truly want to be a, a healthy community, then we need to have better communication. This happened in a way that I think created more damage than it actually solved. Um, I mean, if, if it needed to happen, I recommend that wherever it's happening, that we don't have public health administrative staff talk to county, I'm, I'm sorry, to our superintendent, it should be you, doctor. Uh, and I'm not saying that didn't happen, but from what I'm hearing, there was basically broken communication and the county didn't even reach out to the superintendent, uh, until, you know, pretty much the, the NICSIL report had already went out there. So even when it comes to messaging, that's really important, right? Because they did the contract tracing, and you're right, this little girl went to the science camp. My biggest point in mentioning is she was separate from those three initial cases where they were already contact traced, and that's why this created so much confusion. Uh, so, so granted she was there and maybe there needed to put out a message, but it, it was just, there was individual pieces that weren't necessarily consistent, and we put it out as if it was, and that's what confused the public. And I think it, you know, just, my biggest point is if we can please work at actually communicating with the individuals that we're talking about, because I, I don't think it's going to unite us, it's going to divide us when we don't do that. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, and I, I think we, we can agree on that point. Uh, we're entering the third year now soon of this pandemic, uh, and our, our management of it, and It's a continuous challenge, and there are always opportunities for imperfect communications, uh, whatever the intent is. So, uh, I agree with you that, uh, there's a best practice learning here, uh, and, uh, I will ensure personally that, uh, this kind of, uh, imprecise language is not used in the future. Thank you, doctor.
On that, on that note, we're going to go ahead and go to public comment.
Madam Chair, we just have one more item.
Oh, oh, yes. Edgar was trying to present.
Edgar Nolasco, our deputy, uh, CIO has just a few more things to say. Thanks.
Good morning, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, if CMAT can please share my screen, thank you. Uh, that doesn't look, okay, that looks a lot better, thank you. Uh, we're here to give you an update as the, uh, your board recently, as of August twenty-fourth, passed the San Vito County testing, uh, policy for all county employees. We wanted to provide you an update of what is going on with our workforce. Um, and these are some numbers we wanted to share with you. Uh, we currently, and this number fluctuates, we have five hundred and thirty-five employees. Um, that is full-time employees, temp employees, and other employees that are designated under our policy. Out of those five thirty-five, sixty-five of those are subject to the vaccine mandate with CDPH. Uh, CDPH passed a vaccine mandate for behavioral health on August fifth. We went ahead and implemented that enforcement. Sixty-five of our employees are mandated, uh, no action of the board that was done by CDPH. Out of the five thirty-five, four forty-six have self-attested that they are fully vaccinated based on the definition. Out of those four forty-six, four thirty-one have verified their vaccine status, uh, using the, the CDPH vaccine guidance principles. Um, fifteen of those employees, um, have yet to produce those records, we're working with those employees. Um, it's a failure of communication sometimes with those employees, and some of those employees have odd schedules, um, where they cannot make it down to administration on a regular business hour. So we're working with some of those employees to meet, um, outside of our normal business hours to verify their vaccine status. Um, eighty-six employees are currently testing, uh, bi-weekly, and many thanks to our Health and Human Services colleagues, they have a testing site over there to test employees that are subject to testing based on their self-attestation form, like RMA employees, behavioral health employees, Health and Human Services employees are testing at Health and Human Services. All other employees are testing here at, at administration. Some employees are testing in remote locations because of operations, like our roads, uh, department, uh, we have, uh, testing, we accommodate testing at the site just because, um, it would be operationally impossible for them to come in and test here. So we worked out a, um, uh, working with Mike Chambliss, we're testing our roads people at the yard. Um, additionally, our corrections and probation, uh, folks are testing at the jail, uh, because they run on different schedules for those folks that need to be tested. Um, we, out of all of our population, we are missing three, uh, self-attestation forms. We're working with those employees and those individuals. We're working with those employees and those individuals to get those attestation forms. Uh, two of them, my understanding is a miscommunication. They never received the email where, um, they needed to, uh, fill out a self-attestation form and I expect those to be, uh, filled out by today. Also a small update on the exemptions. Um, we've only had 1% of our employees filed for exemptions. Uh, that's six of them. Only, out of those six, only one of those is subject to the mandatory mandate uh, through CDPH. Out of those six, five of those are religious, one is medical and we're working with those individuals to gather more information, um, to continue the accommodation process based on the information that they, they submitted. Opening up for any questions or comments.
Thanks Edgar for working on that, getting that to the board.
Any questions from the board members regarding this presentation?
No, I just want to thank, thank Edgar for putting, pulling that together. That's very helpful. Thank you.
It was a team effort. I just, I say a lot of thanks to County Council. They've been working with us, Health and Human Services, the entire CIO team, putting this together. It's a team approach.
As well as all the employees too, for going through the process and testing.
Yeah, and it's, um, it's, it's great to see that the vast majority of, of our county employees are, are vaccinated. Uh, thank you.
Okay. So then on that point, if there aren't any further questions, let's go ahead and go to public comment then. On any of the presentation for item number three.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. We have Robert Bernoski in chambers.
It is so hard for me to be polite. How dare you condemn anyone involved with this? And yes, I am the husband of the superintendent, the same person that shares a house, shares a bed with that superintendent. And when she's down there doing CPR with her fellow administrators, that close to that student that was hurt, I think I have a right to know what the student's condition is. Furthermore, as somebody who went to science camp, I think I have a right to know, uh, whether there was, the student was, one of the students that had an outbreak there. I'm not going to break the student confidentiality, but I heard an outright lie stated here for the world to say. So your Texas doctor, who I should have a lot of respect for, he better have his facts right because I don't think that they are. But folks, just think about what you did. You issued a press release to get the alarm going. The doctor had to walk it back on TV, but that wasn't good enough. You still have to be at war with Rob Bernoski, I guess, or war with the public. So you go on, uh, Telemundo and, and I, uh, I guess it was Telemundo I saw, and you make, again, factually incorrect statements. I reached out to my supervisor. I reached out to another supervisor. I tried to reach out to the administration. But no, you want to ignore it because it doesn't fit some narrative. Folks, do your job. Keep, let's keep the decorum. Yes, I am the husband of Jenny Bernoski. Proud of it. I will never shy away from that. And yes, when I know facts that might help you guys manage the county and manage the situation, I'm going to relay those to you. I didn't break any confidentialities. I wasn't telling any secrets. I wanted to help solve the problem. So I'm Rob Bernoski. I'm pro-vax. I'm my body, my choice. Make the choice to get vaccinated. I'm not some, some nut job that's trying to go against you. I'm trying to help my community. You folks serve us. Allow constituents to talk to you. Do not degrade them just because they're a member of the public that happens to be married to the most significant person in this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aliya Salinas?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. Excuse me. I can understand Rob's, uh, emotions right now. But at the same time, um, what's more concerning to me is that it's, this, this child's condition has been politicized. And, and you, Supervisor Hernandez claims that he had a conversation that he wants to work with the board, yet he's the one who's being divisive. This is what started. I put the branch out, an olive branch out in January of 2020 because I was really, really critical of Hernandez's, uh, lack of understanding and lack of trying to get, uh, himself educated on the, the subjects that were coming up here on the agenda. Now for him to come out here and, and the first thing he does is he claims he's not a doctor. That's correct. He's not a doctor. He questions the doctor. The doctor corrects him and yet he turns around and he's like, well, I still don't believe it. Well, that's the problem with Supervisor Hernandez with this issue this year. In 2020, no one, no one expected this to happen in the entire world. This is not just a San Benito County, but this is where we live and this is where it's affected us. And Supervisor Hernandez, of all the supervisors out there, knows exactly what happens when you get COVID. And he says he wants everybody to be honest, yet he hasn't been honest. He got COVID, not once but twice, and he got really, really sick and he lost muscle mass. He was on the meetings on Zoom and you could tell he had problems breathing. He could barely speak and yet he comes out and tells everybody he wants the truth. But the truth is Peter Hernandez needs to come forward and be honest with the public.
On Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment.
Can you hold that please Supervisor Hernandez? Continue on Madam Clerk.
On Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments.
Okay Supervisor Hernandez.
Yeah, just make a very quick point, Madam Chair. Miss Salinas just lied. Second time she lied. It was just an outright lie, which you just mentioned. That's all. Thank you.
This, this issue is just so divisive in the community. I'm just going to try to make sure that we just stay on point. We stay on fact. If we're messaging from the PIO, it's imperative that it's truthful, um, so that we have no distortion of the facts. Um, and, um, it's a no-win situation for me. So I'm going to keep my comments to themselves, um, to myself, excuse me. And so that was a presentation update, right? There wasn't anything?
That was it, yeah. And what we'll do is we'll come back, um, with the ARPA outline and be prepared for the next meeting on that. Yep. That's all, Madam Chair. So we're ready for the next item if there's.
Item number four then.
Thanks. We have our RMA interim director, Mike Chambliss here and Selena.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board. Selena is going to provide you with a, a, a update presentation regarding Senate Bill 1383, which is the methane and organics recycling law that passed back in 2016. We're going to be having some items come before you over the next few months and some decisions. So she's just laying the foundation and here to answer specific questions regarding the legislation. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board. Please just give me one moment to put up the presentation. It looked like there were some issues. Okay. Uh, this morning, I'd like to provide you with a brief presentation on California's Senate Bill SB 1383, also known as California's Short-Lived Climate Pollutant Reduction Strategy. This presentation will include some definitions, history, upcoming requirements and recommended next steps. It is our recommendation that today you adopt the resolution affirming a rural exemption from the requirements of mandatory organics collection and other related SB 1383 activities on behalf of the regional agency. But first a few clarifying definitions. Organic waste, this is a mixture of yard waste, wood waste, fibers such as paper and cardboard, food scraps and also edible food. Organic waste is one of the largest waste streams in California, accounting for roughly one-third of the waste going to our California landfills. Sadly, California throws away more than 6 million tons of food waste every year while millions of Californians are food insecure. When organic waste is landfilled, it later decomposes and emits methane gas, a short-lived climate pollutant that is 72 times more potent than carbon dioxide and contributes to climate change while negatively impacting our air quality and public health. Landfills are responsible for 21% of the state's emissions, uh, methane emissions and are the third largest producer of methane. Overall, there is a lot of usable organic material being disposed that can either be rescued as edible food or that can be composted. These SB 1383 regulations I'm about to share with you are a win-win for public health, feeding those in need and fighting climate change. SB 1383, an unfunded mandate, was signed in 2016 to reduce emissions of short-lived climate pollutants. I'll note that SB 1383 is really an extension of AB 32, California's Global Warming Solution Act of 2006, which first established California's ambitious climate goals. However, this bill focuses on the solid waste side of emissions. SB 1383 is the most significant waste reduction mandate to be adopted in California in the last 30 years. The bill focuses on two main methane emission reduction targets. One, the reduction of organic waste to our landfills. And second, the rescue or recovery of edible food from our landfills. You can see here, uh, the statewide targets established include a 50% reduction in landfill organic waste by 2020 and then a 75% reduction by 2025. Additionally, by 2025, there is a goal of increasing edible food recovery by 20%. Per SB 1383 regulations, there are extensive requirements for local government, businesses and our residents. This slide here provides a basic overview of those requirements. On the left side, you can see, uh, in 2022, just around the corner, uh, SB 1383 will require local jurisdictions to have their programs in place, such as providing organics collection services to all of our residents and businesses. It will require cities and counties to establish an edible food recovery program where applicable businesses will be required to recover edible food, maintain contracts or agreements with, uh, receiving organizations such as our food bank and keep food recovery records. There is related education outreach we must conduct to organic waste generators, such as regarding, um, collection service requirements, edible food donation requirements and overall compliance with SB 1383. City and county facilities will be required to procure recycled content paper and recyclable paper, recovered organic products such as compost and renewable gas from, made from biomass, um, conversion. And additionally, there will be capacity planning requirements for organics processing and food recovering infrastructure to secure access and recovery programs. There is some competitive funding that will be available for establishing this infrastructure or that may be, um, used. We will be required to update our county code as 1383 requires us to have enforceable mechanisms in the form of penalties for non-compliance. And then by 2024, regulations will require local governments to take enforcement against any non-compliant entities. Uh, this, I'm sure, sounds like a lot. I know it does for me. And the hopeful good news is the regional agency does qualify and may apply for a rural exemption that would exempt us from many of the SB 1383 requirements that you see listed here and on the prior slide, but not all. The rural exemption, if granted by CalRecycle, would exempt the county's Integrated Waste Management Regional Agency members, which include the City of Hollister, the County Incorporated and the City of San Juan Batista, from the mandatory organics collection requirements and other associated requirements until September, uh, December 31st of 2026. If granted the exemption, we would still need to comply with establishing an edible food recovery program with enforceable mechanisms and inspection. And two, establish procurement policy for recycled content paper, paper recyclability at our county and city facilities. Ideally, compliance with these requirements would be by January 1st, 2022 or shortly thereafter. Upon approval of the rural exemption, we would be exempt from other SB 1383 related requirements until 2027 or until we reach a population of 70,000, whichever comes first. As for recommended next steps, we first recommend today that you approve the resolution affirming our rural exemption on behalf of the regional agency. This will allow our cities and county additional time to plan for programs and compliance as well as, uh, provide continued education for what's to come to our local businesses and residents. And then next, we will be returning to the board in each city with the next month, uh, within the next month for review and approval of a memorandum of understanding between each RA member outlining roles and responsibility for SB 1383 compliance. An adopted MOU will be required in order for the regional agency to be eligible for a rural exemption. And the board and city councils will hold, um, ideally a first hearing at that same time of the edible food recovery program ordinance and we would then plan for a second hearing in January. Also, within the next month, a separate but related presentation and potential project development agreement will be brought to the board for approval in efforts to explore our regional agency organics infrastructure needs and planning. And lastly, even with the rural exemption, we do not want to wait to comply until December 31st of 2026 or until we reach 70,000 in population. So we'll be working with our new solid waste consultant, R3 Consulting, on a compliance schedule for SB 1383 and we will present that to you at a later date in 2022. Uh, that concludes our potential next steps and presentation. This was just a high level of SB 1383, but I'm happy to answer any questions. You'll be seeing a lot more of me over the coming months, um, and we'll provide more detail as we move forward.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Uh, yes Supervisor Hernandez.
Yes. Well, this one's to the CIO. I saw that it said unfunded mandate. It's non-applicable.
I have a hard time believing that's not going to be the case in the future, but I don't know how it pertains to, maybe just because it's a presentation or why does it say it's not applicable?
Can, can you please restate that question?
Yeah, just the, because basically our agenda item says that this item is, it's a non-app, it's not applicable the, uh, whether there's, it's, you know, funded or not funded, right? If it's an unfunded mandate or if it's not. And, uh, I have a hard time believing that, that this is in any way funded.
Yeah, so, um, for this presentation, for the work we're doing right now through R3 Consulting, um, working to, to have the compliance schedule, that is, um, within our budget. We've, we've put in our budget additional staff time, the contract with R3. Um, so that is, is funded, but we, yes.
Yeah, got it. Okay, thank you, Selena. Yeah, so but basically, once we get to, and, and that's my question to you as you're mentioning an edible food recovery program, that sounds like a lot of work and cost. Um, I know as, you know, as a small business owner, this is something that I've struggled with because usually it, the state tells us what to do and we got to spend the money as a business owner, um, on how to figure out how to, how to do what they say. So can you explain what an edible food recovery program is?
Sure. Um, so at this point, we're working with our food bank to understand the needs, the capacity. Um, but the edible food recovery, um, would require tier one and tier two businesses, which can, um, I have a, a map here. I think there was one available in the presentation. But would require those tier businesses to comply with, um, they would have recovery, uh, agreements with the donating, um, sorry, let me restart. I'm just going to move to that slide.
Just slide it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, make sure you display it. Thanks.
Okay, it looks like the slide might have been taken out here. Um, please give me one moment. I think it was in the old one, yeah. So edible food recovery organizations, we would be looking at the capacity planning for that. And then for restaurants, uh, applicable hospitals, hotels, they would be required to, um, recover edible food. And working with our food banks, they would have, uh, agreements with, between the two. Um, and then they would be reporting to us on the recovered food annually. And we would be an entity within the county, um, or the regional agency would be inspecting for those agreements for the, for, for, and we would be making sure folks are complying with reporting to us those, the food recovered. Does that make sense? Should I elaborate at all?
Uh, kind of, sort of. So, okay, so in, in a practical.
A business doesn't sell their food. I'm assuming so you're wanting them to not throw it away. You want them to give it away and they have to package it and then get rid of it that way, like, or? it that way, like, or is it they have to throw it away, but it's a different process to throw it away?
Looking at edible food recovery, not food that, food scraps or food, let's say there's a buffet, that is not deemed edible because it's, it's open, there's, there needs to be certain requirements, health requirements. So we would be looking to recover that, and every reporting entity would be required to recover a portion of their edible food, ideally to meet the state requirement of twenty percent food recovery.
So whatever they don't sell, is that what you're saying? They, they have to give it to the local food bank, and there's got to be a process to do that?
Yes, yeah, and, and at the next presentation, within, within a month, we're going to be focusing on the edible food recovery requirements in more depth with an ordinance sample for the first hearing.
Okay, thank you, Selena.
Any others?
Just, just to sum up quickly, if we approve this exemption, how much more time does it give us to meet the requirements, and, and when do we expect to, to meet them? I mean, it sounds like there's still, there's quite a bit to be done.
Yeah, so with those two requirements I mentioned, we would still be, the exemption wouldn't exempt those, the edible food recovery, the paper procurement, but for everything else, we would have until 2027 to comply, or until we reach seventy thousand in population. So we're under that right now. But again, we don't want to wait until that date. We're going to work on a compliance plan to get ahead of those dates, and we're reporting to CalRecycle annually. April first actually is the first date that CalRecycle wants to see our plan for compliance and, and know where we are, initial numbers, and more. So that'll be the first.
And as you point out, we're going to hear a lot more about this going forward.
Yes, a lot more. I'll be here probably every month.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, thanks. So I support the exemption, just we're a small county with scarce resources, it just makes a lot of sense. The other requirements, 2022, just want to say I have full confidence in our staff, and it seems like those areas are right up your alley, basically, as far as the programming goes. I also would just add, I wouldn't count on the six-year, having those six years at the, looking at the number of homes we have in this community, we're going to probably hit that seventy thousand mark well before the six years. Thank you.
If I can respond to that question? So it, it, a lot is, a lot of responsibility is going to fall on IWM, but, you know, each department is going to need to understand how this also affects their role, their, their responsibility. So we're going to be, in addition to bring it going to each city council, each, the Board of Supervisors, we're also going to be meeting with several regional agency departments to, to talk about how it affects all of us over the next couple of months.
Selena, I have one quick question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, are you going to be meeting with the businesses on educating them what this means anytime soon, or even just a proposal?
The, we're, we're doing monthly reminders in the chamber newsletter right now, and what I would like to do, something that Gilroy Chamber and the Morgan Hill Chamber, is a workshop with our business community, and we're hoping to partner with the Chamber and the Hollister Downtown Association, the San Juan Batista Association, to get the most attendance and, and promotion of such an event.
Thank you.
So let's go ahead and go to public comment, then.
To make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press the raise your hand icon on your screen or star nine on your phone. Alya Salinas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisors. So this edible food recovery program sounds fantastic, right? But San Benito County's small businesses, restaurants, even the ones that are, you know, franchises, they, they have a very small margin, so I know that this is going to be an expense on them. I'm all for the exemption, of course, but San Benito County residents already pay a fee to Recology for those green waste containers, and they went out, they went to all the meetings when they're, every time they want to get a raise, and what we're supposed to be doing with those green containers, and they're huge. They're not small, they, they only have one size. So does this mean that, and I knew, and I knew for a long time that Recology was way ahead of themselves, they came up and they said, this is going to be the future, so we're going to start doing it now, and so they put all, all these cans out, the, the recycling containers are also large, they're not small. So I would like to have a future meeting where the Board of Supervisors have a discussion with Recology with regards to now this coming up, about the residents getting rate reductions if something else has to be done. Because as it is now, Recology continually gets a rate increase every single year, and we're stuck with them for more than a decade, if I remember correctly. So how does the county benefit, the county residents benefit, and how do the restaurants, the businesses benefit without having to have more costs out of their pocket? And if, if so, can the rates be decreased based on this new bill? Thank you.
I, I don't want to speak for sure, but at this time, with the Recology franchise agreement, which was a contract written, proposed by Recology and worked through with our local task force in hopes to prepare for things like this and fund programs like this that might be coming, additional staff, we have received new revenues from that franchise agreement, litter abatement, AB three-nine, AB nine-three-nine, HHW, and so, again, at this time, I, I don't foresee that affecting our rates during this contract period, but I think with our work with the consultant, discussions with Recology, we'll know for sure. At this point, the requirements for organics collection to our residents are required, and so they're compliant. But with businesses, it's optional, and it's actually, organics is placed at a reduced cost in comparison to garbage, and so if they're able to decrease their garbage, increase their recycling, a lot of businesses can save money by adding organics and increasing their recycling. So that's a win-win for businesses, but again, more discussion needed with, with R3 and with Recology.
On Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments.
Okay. So if there aren't any further comments or concerns, we have a staff recommendation to adopt the resolution to affirm the exemption. What is the will of the board?
I'll move to approve as recommended.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. So that takes us to item number five.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So we're just going to do a quick update. Our clerk of the board has just a, a quick item to discuss with your board concerning this item, and then we'll defer it back to the, to your board for updates on your monthly ad-hocs and committees that you've attended, so, Jennifer?
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board and members of the public. I'm here today just to give you a quick update on our standing committees. I just wanted to make it aware to the board and to our county staff and any agencies that might run a standing committee meeting, that they must follow the Brown Act, which means they need to provide an agenda and minutes. So just wanting to make it aware, if you see a committee on this list, that you do need to follow the Brown Act. We do have this on our county website, so you could check it out. So standing committees, they must follow the Brown Act. Agenda needs to be posted seventy-two hours prior to a regular meeting. An agenda needs to be posted twenty-four hours prior to a special meeting. And we are asking if you are having one of these meetings, to please provide the clerk of the board's office with an agenda, and please provide the minutes and a reasonable time after the meeting, so we can put it on our website under the minutes and agendas and minutes tab for each committee. I will be following up in our office with all the contacts, contacts for these committees individually, just so they are aware too. And just a friendly reminder that there's still open vacancies for Parks and Rec, District Three and Five, Community Action Board, District One, Four, and Five, and the LCA Committee for District Three. If anybody's interested in putting in an application, you can get one at the clerk of the board's office or on our county website under the clerk of the board, where we have the applications. Is there any questions or concerns? If not, I will hand it over to your board to give an update for the ad-hocs.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
We'll hand it back to you, Madam Chair.
So I know that there's some updates that are required, so, or that wanted to be presented, so where would you like to start, gentlemen?
I can start, Madam Chair. Just some quick updates. This already has been mentioned, but the Economic Development Ad hoc Committee actually met yesterday specifically to discuss more details about the changes in the cannabis ordinance, including looking at outdoor cultivation, and, and as mentioned, that's going to be coming in front of the board at our next, next meeting. I know that, I believe, in the next few days Supervisor Gonzalez and myself will be meeting to further discuss the American Rescue Plan money, and I know we're, we're wrapping up getting input from the community on that, and so look forward to getting more into, into that very important issue. Obviously, as mentioned, we've already been, you know, regularly meet with COVID ad-hocs. We've already addressed that. We're very, it was mentioned again, I think we're very close on the, the tax share agreement, and, and hopefully, we're going to see that at our next.
That's the plan, so we're meeting with the city tomorrow to discuss it internally. We'll probably have a meeting one more time with the ad hoc and then bring it back to the board.
Okay. So looking forward to getting that. Already mentioned, I, I serve on LAFCO, and we are having, I think, an important, and maybe the first-time-ever joint study session tomorrow evening at five o'clock. That is open to the public. It is also available both Zoom, it's at Ridge Mark. And of course, we will all be following, you know, the Brown Act, et cetera, but it's, it's an informational meeting more than anything else on LAFCO. Regularly meet along with Supervisor Gonzalez on the Behavioral Health Board, and we had meeting last, last week, and I think we're talking about some important issues regarding increase in the number of clinicians for, in particular, for the Behavioral Health Board. Like many areas of the county, we have struggled with trying to fill positions, and so that's an area that we're, we're particularly looking at for the behavioral health department. I also serve on COG, and, you know, the primary issue there, I think, is to try to see what we can do to cut down on the timeline for dealing with Highway twenty-five, and that's something that we're working on. I think most people know that one fifty-six is soon to be, construction is soon to be started, and also, just to mention that although this is not coming from us locally, Caltrans is going to soon be starting with a roundabout at the one fifty-six, twenty-five juncture. I think that's soon after the first of the year, I believe. And then lastly, we've had a landfill committee meeting just recently. The, just an update, is it looks like the draft EIR will not be out until probably March of this coming year, so we still have a number of months out there. You know, it's an indication that there's, there's, the time is being spent to make sure that it's, it's a very thorough and robust EIR, and that all alternatives and mitigation issues are being addressed. So again, probably in March is what we're looking at. In between now and then, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of plans for trying to get as much information out there to the public, the history, the facts, how we are where we are today, and just educate the public so everyone can make informed decisions. When the draft EIR comes out, I want to assure everyone, there'll be plenty of opportunity for anyone and everyone in the public to comment before it goes to a final EIR. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
A lot of mine, I, I won't repeat a lot of what Supervisor Tiffany said, but I, just so people know, I'm working on the, again, the cannabis thing is economic development, the landfill, just a slight correction, I think it's May when the EIR actually comes out. We're talking about maybe doing the town hall in, in the area of March. So look out for information on that. That's our efforts to try to be as transparent as possible throughout this process. And then the tax sharing agreement with the City of Hollister, again, very big deal, and I'd really like to see us get to that, hopefully in November. I know we have a lot on the plate in November, but to me, the tax sharing agreement might be at the top of the, the big list.
Plan is the first meeting in November, that's our plan.
Yeah, appreciate that. And then the, I'm also on the Integrated Waste Management Task Force, and the task force is, there's a consultant that's looking at initial stages of a potential, speaking of organics, of a potential transfer station for organics near the Hollister Wastewater Treatment Plant, and I'm sure there'll be more to come on that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief with mine. The tourism ad hoc which you're on, we're, we have momentum, it seems like we're getting everything lined up, we have a lot of big, big interested folks, businesses on that next step with, with the tourism company that we're working with, to ultimately have a symposium where we're going to have dialogue about what it means to support and address tourism in San Diego County. And then the broadband, you know, as you're on also, is, we're working still on that RCRC study, basically where we're going to figure out what, what would be the plan for San Diego County to address broadband in certain areas that are, that, you know, they, that are basically not as densely populated and where folks that are socio-economic are struggling, basically, that, that don't have access, so to try to address the access issue. And then the regional park, obviously, that's really exciting. There's already a, I know that my catalyst was working on a, it was a draft brochure, and I think we, we should be hopefully finalized pretty soon on putting it out there, getting the public excited. I know that we already supported, obviously, that seven hundred thousand dollars to that, that lawnmower, which is a lot of money, but it's really important, I think, to, to address dry, dry weeds and stuff, obviously, thank God, we're in the rainy season now, but, but ultimately, getting ready for that park to, to start to get built up. And I know in that brochure, they actually have a layout of the timeline, the expected timeline on, on when these funds would be spent, and thank God, we actually received that, that three-quarter of a million dollars, and I know it was also with the port supervisor, or I'm sorry, Assemblyman Rivas, so thank you to him for supporting those funds. Yeah, to, to get that regional park to become a, an actual reality, which is, I'm really excited, next year's going to definitely be a big game changer as far as the visibility in that area. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
The committees and the ad hoc that I'm involved with is, as Supervisor Tiffany had mentioned, the ARPA funding. We haven't quite met yet, but we are meeting soon, and we will be taking into consideration the polls that were, the surveys that were put out and how the community wanted to focus on it. As Supervisor Hernandez mentioned, it was my understanding there was a request to have a meeting this afternoon after, or this evening after today's meeting regarding tourism, so that'll be happening today, it sounds like. I'm also on AMBAG, we meet monthly with Supervisor Tiffany on, on that one, and so that's a very interesting one. The Behavioral Health, we also meet there monthly, and, and as Supervisor Tiffany had mentioned, that we are looking at staffing and the ability to be able to provide the services, the level of services that are necessary here in the community. I'm also on the CS. I'm also on the CSAC. I'm the delegate for CSAC. There is a conference that is happening the last week of November, first week of December in Monterey. I also am on the first five committee. We just met on Monday, yesterday. I'm on the Community Correction Partnership, which is also part of the Juvenile Justice. And there are quarterly meetings that I have been attending, but the partnerships are meeting on a monthly basis that I'm not attending because that's more micromanaging. I'm not trying to micromanage a program. The Governance Committee was just set up and that'll be dealing with water issues in San Benito County, San Juan, and the City of Hollister. As Supervisor Hernandez mentioned, we had a broadband meeting last Friday. We met with the members of the task force and it was a nice showing of individuals from the community that will represent those agencies, firms that will help us potentially solve the broadband issue. We also had a member of Ana Caballero's office that he addressed the AB 28, SB 28, excuse me, SB 28 that's dealing with the areas in the community that the, that the, I can't even think of the name of, the agencies that provide internet, satellite technology to the communities.
Telecoms.
Telecom, thank you, that provide services and wherever there are voids and areas where there isn't any service.
Franchise agreement, the franchise agreements.
Franchise agreements, yes.
That's correct.
I'm also a member of LAFCO and we have that joint meeting that will be happening this week. And that's pretty much it. Mobility, we meet quarterly, so we'll be having one, I think, in December if I'm not mistaken. Okay. But anyways, the question I asked for this one is, I know that, that there was a question as to how frequent do we want to have this on the agenda? So this is the conversation that I would like to have with the supervisors presently. As I know that we had mentioned possibly having the ad hoc update at the end of the month, but then there were some concerns that this should be every meeting. It doesn't matter to me, but I want input from the remaining supervisors to see what your thoughts are. I know that as we give presentations on our supervisor's item number, let me get to...
Three, is that three, COVID?
Uh, no, I'm thinking more G, item G at the very beginning with you board announcements and that's supposed to be information only. We're kind of delving into the area of the ad hoc as well as the board announcements. So just for clarity, so that that way we don't get accused of presenting something that isn't on the agenda. If it's something that we participated in, you know, it stands to reason that we should be able to share it, but it seems like it's getting a little bit convoluted and so I want to hear your thoughts on that so that we'll make sure that we are consistent in how we're presenting. And so questions, concerns on that topic?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think once a month is fine as long as it's clear and then, you know, I've been trying to not do ad hoc stuff in my announcements as you saw today. So I just, as long as we're clear, I think once a month is definitely suitable for ad hocs unless there's a level of urgency and then we just put it on the agenda. So, thank you.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. I could go either way frankly. I mean, if it's, if we do it quickly like we just did or like we're doing, we do it every meeting, but I know we're trying to be more time efficient, so once a month and we can be careful. I guess the only issue would be is if something's important to be brought up that comes up that's not on the agenda and then you don't have the opportunity, but the way I understand it in talking, you know, I was talking to you separately, that I think as long as we don't step, the way I understand it, as long as we don't really kind of step out of the, and really get into great detail during that board announcement, if we have something important and it's not the meeting where we're getting into ad hocs, we probably, I don't think there's anything wrong, I don't believe there's anything wrong with us briefly mentioning something on, you know, that's related to ad hoc. I mean, we're so involved in these committees and the ad hocs that it's almost impossible to separate, you know, what we're doing and just say, well, we're only going to talk about it once a month. But as long as we can touch on it at the, in the board announcement, again, in a meeting that we're not dealing with ad hocs, I'm fine with doing it once a month. That was a long answer.
Yeah, yeah. And if I may, Madam Chair and Board, I just, you know, I think that's great. That's fine. That's historically how the board's always done it with board announcements, keeping it just to the point, hey, this is what's happening. This is, oh, by the way, here's an event, you know, or I attended an event or given, you know, give an update to the board, totally fine. I think is when you start pulling the PowerPoint up and you start going through numbers and start doing a lot of detail, that's when all of a sudden we need to pull back on that and just kind of keep it, you know, this kind of an update. That's really what it's there for as an announcement. So I think that's basically what you've been doing, so I think it's fine.
Part of my concern was today, like the example where we had the presentation from Tracy and Dr. G and then the conversations went off into the spring grove example. I sat here and just listened because I know that it was a controversial issue. It was a miscommunication of some sort. It caused static in the community and so I wasn't part of it. So I pretty much just let you all speak, but it's like, where do I as a chair draw the line? And I know everybody felt that they needed to express themselves, so I just left it. But I'm getting correspondents accusing me of censoring my supervisors and I'm not trying to, but it's a, it's just a very difficult line, so I'm just trying to keep everything out.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Hernandez.
Yeah, honestly, I think you did a really good job of handling that conversation. You know, it was relative to the item, so I don't think it was outside of it, but to get back to what the goal is, when it comes to the member reports and just historically as CIO Espinoza had mentioned, the initial item that just updates, it's specific to events that you're part of, things, you know, in a, maybe a grievance from an individual constituent, you know, maybe referencing an issue or, hey, this is an emergency, I saw that stop sign that was down and we need to fix that, or maybe something quickened to the point. Ad hoc stuff is obviously more, you expand more and that's specific to committees and ad hocs. And then there's still that final item where you have your piece of your opportunity, which is something that you would propose as an agendized item for future. And it's, you know, obviously the focus should try to be as much as possible to become, to be objective and not get it into emotion and subjectivity, which is hard to do sometimes, but nonetheless, that's kind of the structural that I've kind of been used to, you know, being here three years now on the board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. So then let's go ahead and go to the public, public comment on this item number five.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. Elias Linas.
There's never been an issue until now and I don't really think it's an issue. It's like board announcements, if you're on an ad hoc committee, you report it. I want to hear it every time I come to a meeting. I want to get an update personally and I don't want to have to wait for four weeks to find out that three and a half weeks ago, y'all did something on your ad hoc committee when you could have reported it, you know, eight days later at the next meeting. With regards to using your time wisely, again, I'm a little, I get taken aback by that. I know exactly what you're trying to say, that you want to get business done, but at the same time, if you're trying to say that if you have an agenda item for ad hoc meetings, reporting once a month, that that's going to make your meeting shorter. I advocated that this is a full-time job and you should be compensated for said, but since that has occurred, this new board has decided that they want to do as little as possible and I find that odd. You know, you guys work a lot. I know that, but you know, you want to, you know, I only have 42 seconds left because now I can only speak for two minutes. I have a lot to say and I'm not the only one. There's a lot of people out in the public and I, for instance, for me, the tax sharing agreement is really important, very, very important. I want to know what's going on with it, but I have to wait and you guys, you know, are talking about it and not knowing that you guys are meeting makes me anxious and I want to know that something is going forward because I know that the city wants to take advantage of that and I don't want, and the county is, you know, has to take care of itself with what you can do with the tax sharing agreement. So I want to know more, more often. Thank you.
On Zoom, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments.
Okay. So the question was weekly, excuse me, every meeting or once a month? So...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Go ahead, do it every meeting. To me, it's not a time issue. It's just, you know, there's just, a lot of these are just very minor things that we're not really giving you that much information, so I'm not sure what you're waiting for with bated breath. But yeah, every meeting's perfectly fine for me.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, and if that helps get more information out to the public, that's good. And, you know, that, you know, the five minutes that I'm going to lose, you know, I won't be able to do, you know, not work at, I'm okay with. Trust me, we are working full-time, okay? Thank you.
More than that sometimes, yes. Okay. So Supervisor Hernandez, are you okay with every meeting to present an update?
Um, sure. I mean, at the end of the day, you're going to have less meetings in between, obviously, so you have less to report. I mean, to me, the main thing is just being objective and to the point because I know we could easily elaborate a lot all of a sudden at 12:00 and we haven't really gotten very far. So thank you, Madam Chair.
And as to the public comment regarding the tax sharing agreement, I don't even know the details of that yet, you know, so I'm in the dark too. I'm not on the committee for that and so I'm waiting with bated breath what the details of that is also. So, yeah. All right, so 12:16 then, can we go ahead and, go ahead and go to the working lunch? So let's announce closed session.
Twenty-four.
How much time are we looking at before we do that?
Probably at least an hour and 15 minutes, probably.
An hour and 15?
Yeah.
Okay. So that would take us until 1:45-ish? Okay, so...
1:30, 1:30.
Oh, an hour and 15, I'm sorry. I thought an hour and a half. Okay, 1:30. All right, so go ahead, Barbara.
Twenty-four Conference with Labor Negotiators Agency Designated Representatives, Danya Torres Wong, Michael McDougall, Ray Espinoza, Edgar Nolasco, Gabriel Orozco, Barbara Thompson, Elvia Borosio, Employee Organizations Institutions Association, Law Enforcement Management, Management Employees Group, SEIU Local 521, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Confidential, Confidential Management Appointed Department Heads and Unrepresented Employees, and SEIU Local 2015. Under Government Code Section 54957.6 and 25 is Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Pending Litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9A, Western Resources Legal Center versus County of San Benito, San Benito Superior Court, CU 21-00204. Any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and adjourn for lunch, working lunch, and resume back at 1:30. So we'll go ahead and adjourn for lunch, working lunch, and resume back at 1:30.
For closed session?
No reportable action.
Okay, so then let's move on to the consent item. Items number six through 23. Let's go ahead and go to public comment and then we'll pull items from the consent item per supervisor's request.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. Aliya Salinas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It actually would be more beneficial to the public if you allowed the supervisors, the board, to name which items they're going to pull. Therefore, the public comments don't have to be as long and/or can actually focus on those items that the supervisors are going to pull. Because honestly, I want to pull, or I want to talk about item 10 only in anticipation that I believe a supervisor may be pulling it. I don't know that. And if you allowed the board to mention which items they're going to pull, I would not have to stand up here and say that I want to pull item 10. That being said, item six, seven, 11, 15, no, I'm sorry, 16 and 17. I just want to point out, make a comment again on items six and seven with regards to the dates that these contracts are coming before the board. You're going, it's a, they should have been done well before the July deadline and now you're in October wanting to go back. I don't know what the auditing process is at the department, but obviously there's an issue if you're having to file something three months later to try to update a contract that's already expired and you're now making it retroactive. This is not the first time this continually happens and something needs to be done about that. I want to congratulate County Council Barbara Thompson for the contract to continue as county council. I think she does a great job and she does a great benefit to San Benito County and you should all be very proud of the work that she does for you. And obviously by approving the contract, you're showing her that. Item 16. What is the agreement? You're adopting a resolution and when I highlight the light item, it just states again that if you're approving a resolution and I would have to go to the packet, the public would have to go to the packet and the packets can be hundreds and hundreds of pages and they're difficult to find. I would suggest again that you add more language to this so that the public for transparency knows exactly what it is that you're approving here. Is this, was there a public notice or is there going to be a public notice for others to participate in such, in such an agreement to allow other food concessions out at the Veterans Park? And if there's going to be, because now you're, it's a non-exclusive, it states here, but if now you get a swarm of people coming up and wanting to open up and have their own catering trucks out there, what is the limit going to be? And is there a business fee or an agreement of some of those revenues other than tax? And again, I have problems with these catering trucks that are out in the county that are not doing it correctly. This company is coming forward and doing it correctly and asking for permission. But again, the ones out in the county are taking in revenue and we're not getting any revenue out of it. So that being said, is there a, you're granting permission. So this is on a cash basis. How do we, how do we keep track of what the money's being out there so that it is beneficial towards the county and/or towards the money's going to upkeep Veterans Park? Thank you.
On Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment, press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. You've been unmuted, please state your name and how many items.
Item 11. Two weeks ago in closed sessions, you reviewed and considered a new term for county council's contract. I totally assume you've reached new terms as that contract has been placed on today's consent agenda. That placement means virtually an automatic approval amid a list of things that the board will not individually discuss. I'm concerned by this as I think all county residents should be. Here's why. County council is among the highest paid county workers, worker, about $180,000 in 2018 according to public records. So a new, a new four-year term added to her existing contract would likely cost the county more than three quarters of a million dollars. That is a big commitment and expenditure of public funds. I'm not suggesting the final outcome, but in the end, council works for the people in public position, paid for by the people, so all of this discussion about her performance and employment be hidden from public view. County council is also one of the most senior advisors on the board. In simple terms, it's a job. It is ensure the county's operations are done within the law and to protect the county and to defend it from legal actions, very important stuff. But in the past year or so, you know, the county has lost three significant lawsuits because of the behavior on legal matters and it has paid tens of thousands of dollars in legal settlements from public coffers as a result that's important too. This all seems worthy of more consideration than a virtually automatic consent calendar approval. After all, a closed-door discussion, which is what staff is recommending, this decision will impact county operations for at least four years and likely even more given, given the ongoing litigation the county has been exposed to due to county council's recent missteps. The people should be allowed to know what is being done on their behalf. I would also suggest that the board wait until the.
Okay, so what is the will of the board with regards to items number six through 23?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull six, seven, 11 and 13.
Six, seven, 11 and 13. Supervisor Tiffany?
I was going to pull item 11, but I have nothing else to add.
Okay. Supervisor Hernandez?
I believe you're muted.
Sorry, yeah, I was muted, sorry. I said nothing to pull, Madam Chair.
Nothing to pull, is that what you said? Yeah, okay, neither do I. So we have items number six, seven, 10, 11 and 13.
Not 10. Six, seven, 11 and 13.
I thought Colin had asked for 10. No, I, I thought, no, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so six, seven, 11 and 13.
Yeah.
Okay, so then can I get a motion by the board to pull all other items other than six, seven, 11 and 13?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so you have a four zero on those items. So let's go ahead and start with number six first.
Yes, and this is Alan from Behavioral Health, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so my, I pulled this, you know, I have the same issues as you can guess that I've had in the past with these contracts. So I don't really necessarily expect any different explanation, but if there is something, you know, unique to these two, you know, six and, I don't know if we want to, I guess we can take six first, but I have the same issue with six and seven, just the lack of going out and, you know, examining if there are other options here.
Yeah, I think.
If I may, can we hear both those items at the same time then if that's the same issue? Okay, thank you, go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, so.
Contract number six, Traditions Behavioral Health. That contract is very unique because Traditions Behavioral Health is a company that is not like any of the other temporary staffing companies that we utilize. So they're the only business that I'm aware of that can do a long-term placement and that essentially is actually the biggest selling point about Traditions Behavioral Health is you don't have to incur a lot of upheaval with the switching to different providers as they rotate out placements. So this particular psychiatrist has been with us for many years and we're very thankful of that. And I think that's the uniqueness of Traditions Behavioral Health. I'm not aware of any other company. In fact, I don't believe any other company can offer that to us. So that's what makes this contract so very different than our other temporary staffing agency contracts. And everybody has been very happy with Dr. Wong and I think the clients appreciate tremendously. We don't have upheaval and turnover in our psychiatrists, providers. They can build a relationship with that person over time. They can count on seeing the same person over time for their appointments. So I think the longevity of Traditions Behavioral Health is in fact the biggest selling point about Traditions and makes it very different than the other agencies.
And so there, I mean, you said you're not, it doesn't sound like you were necessarily resilient. I mean, did you guys do any search, searching? Did you, was there even ever any effort initiated or you basically just bringing this back? So there's 10 prior contracts on this, there's 10 prior contracts, no amendments on number seven. You know, I'm a believer that at some point we need to look at a policy of every X number of years, you need to come back and do an examination of whether we're getting the best. I can't just trust you by your word here and it doesn't sound like the department did any effort at all again to even remotely look into this or to even acknowledge that there are concerns on the board. So I'm just continually frustrated and I'll be opposing six and seven. Thank you.
If I may, do some explanation on seven also.
Seven is a, we said county department of mental health produced contract. We did not produce the contract and they wanted to go back even further. They have been historically tardy in production of their contracts. They told who, we couldn't do that because the previous fiscal year had already closed. So they were doing their best just to get us the fiscal year 21, 22 contract and because it came so late, we suggested it be a two-year contract. And this contract is primarily to access Marcev County Behavioral Health inpatient unit. And we need all the inpatient providers that we can get. Otherwise, people spend more time in the emergency room as we look for beds for them in psychiatric hospitals that don't have a lot of availability, which is a problem throughout the state. So that's the story on the Marcev County contract number seven.
That was all.
Any other questions or concerns from the other board members for item number six and seven?
Madam Chair, I guess my only comment would be I, while I totally. Madam Chair, I guess my only comment would be, I, while I totally understand and I tend to agree with Supervisor Cosmicki on these contracts that keep coming back to us like this without, you know, going through a, you know, a proper process. I guess my greater concern is I worry about, given where we are, you know, the, the loss of potential services we, we may run into. So I'll, you know, I, I don't disagree with Supervisor Cosmicki, but I'm gonna support them. But it, it's clear we have to address this issue. And I know, I know Ray, this has been already a, a discussion, a major discussion item.
Yeah. Madam Chair, if I may comment on this. So I've had multiple meetings with Alan and his team concerning contracts. And I just wanna make sure that the board is clear that the, the Behavioral Health Department will be coming back and presenting all of the contracts. I've asked for it to be in the spreadsheet and to outline what contracts are state contracts, what, what contracts are, in essence, really, contracts that other counties or jurisdictions are requesting of us as well as just standard contracts. And then also to requesting them to go out to RFP and put a plan together because going out to RFP with all of their contracts is gonna be a pretty big pill to swallow for one year. So they have to, I want them to put a plan together over multiple years to get that done. So, so they are working on it. Alan is well aware of it. And I've asked him that that has to come at some time within this, end of the next, the next few meetings that we have before any other contracts come back to your board. So then that way you guys are aware, the board is aware of where they stand with all of their contracts. Just FYI on that.
Supervisor Hernandez?
He is, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just keep it brief. Although it makes sense what, what our CAO mentioned, just even for our education and understanding. I know talking to Alan and talking to Ray, at the end of the day, these are, a lot of these are specialty services. You're not gonna find them in-house. So, you know, from a business practice, if you think about it, if you're gonna go keep looking for other contracts, you're gonna spend a lot of time and money just on that effort. If you already know that you understand the industry, you know who provide the services, why would you go do a bunch of extra steps when you know that, you know, as Alan mentioned, this is a limited, you know, there's no one else that can provide those services in number six or, or well enough. The bottom line is really, to me, it's, it's having a good relationship with Alan and making sure that, yes, we do understand the implications of these contracts. But to micromanage him, I don't think serves the purpose of, of Behavioral Health as well as we think it does. I mean, we can, we can try to tell him what to do, but if he's already doing it, I don't think that encourages trust. I think that discourages trust. Those are my comments, Madam Chair.
And the only thing that I'll add is each time we look at the consent item, when I sit with our CAO and our County Council, this comment comes up that we know that if it's a contract, if it didn't go up for RFP, then we know it's gonna be pulled. We also know about individual specialized services. And so this is an ongoing conversation that we are having eternally. But Alan, what I would suggest is you just follow through with what Ray had suggested. I think you're gonna get a lot more leeway and approval from the board as a whole if you give us that spreadsheet as to contracts so that you can show that you're doing your due diligence. I know from my experience of being on the behavioral board, when you're questioned and you give us an explanation, they're valid and I could understand that. But we keep having this conversation again and again. So I'm asking you that you just work with us so that that way we just get a little bit further than, than where we are right now. Okay?
Madam Chair, if I may add one more comment.
Yes.
I know that this comment's been brought up multiple times by the public as well as the board at times. And, and when you look at the dates to lie first, a lot of times those are, it's impossible because they're state con, by the time they get it signed back from the state, there are three months. I've seen eighteen months later that we've actually received a contract from the state or other agencies. So just, I wanted to present that and make sure that it was clear for the public as well as the board that a lot of these dates, especially in the behavioral health and health and human services contract world, we don't get the contracts timely. So just step by eye on that.
So then on that note, what is the, what the board for items number six and seven?
I'll make a motion that we approve both contracts for item six and item seven.
Okay, and I will second that. Oops, did you want to second that Supervisor Hernandez?
It's fine, Madam Chair.
You could let him have it. Okay, so we have a first and a second. So all in favor, item number six and seven?
Aye.
Aye. Those oppose?
Nay.
So we have three, one. Supervisor Cosmicki has been the, no, the nay on that. Okay, so we'll go down to item number eleven. So it looks like both Supervisor Cosmicki and Tiffany had mentioned this.
Well.
Doesn't matter. Go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So my biggest, I think what stands out the most about this, I've been clear about this. This is now an open session, obviously, but that I just, I vehemently disagree with the arrangement of a guaranteed four-year, what I would refer to as almost like an ironclad contract. It's nothing at all personal with Ms. Thompson. The, the state law is pretty clear about that when you initially hire somebody that you, with this particular position, the county is required to appoint to a four-year term. And then when you go beyond that, though, I see nothing that explicitly lays out a reappointment provision or multiple terms in the, in the language. And we do have precedent, even in our own county, with prior County Council. The late Matt Granger had served as County Council without a four-year agreement. And for whatever reason, the state legislature, you know, has that when you hire somebody, there, I guess there are reasons for that, but it essentially just gives somebody, you know, it's, it's, it's not guaranteed literally, but it, in practicality, it is. You can, you can be let go for cause, but there are very narrow, there are very narrow reasons that you're allowed to do that. So it really puts the county, to me, in a position that this, we're setting this position aside and saying that, that we're willing to give them more of, like I said, an ironclad arrangement than really any other employee, including electeds, who, you know, can be recalled. And, and so with this position, they're, they're really in a, they're protected to, to a large degree. So in the first nine or ten months, you know, I don't wanna, again, I, I appreciate the County Council. She works hard. I know she's dedicated to the county. She's accessible. There are, there are other areas that I've, you know, that I, I just think we need to work on, you know, such as, you know, just trying to stay away from policy advocacy. You know, to me, the County Council is, is a legal advisor and that's really, that should be the sole focus of the job. And I, you know, I've had issues where, and maybe it's just culture, you know, we're a new board, but maybe, maybe it's just how it's been, I don't know. But I just haven't felt comfortable at all times with where I've felt like the County Council's office is pushing policy as opposed to advising. And then I also have issues, and I've talked to Barbara about this, she's well aware about, you know, just long-term looking at, we really need to rein in these out of, these outside litigation costs. You know, we can't have it both ways. We've got a staff that's a good staff of attorneys that are qualified. That's very expensive. And then, you know, and then we're going out and getting outside litigators, you know, when I don't think it's always necessary. I think it is necessary in certain, for certain instances when there are very specialized reasons for it. But I, I would really like to see us clean that up. And I would like to see, even if it means Deputy County Counsel is going and spending two weeks in a trial, I would rather do that than go hire somebody for the same amount that we're, that we're gonna basically pay a lawyer for an entire year. It just doesn't, to me, it makes, fiscally does not make sense the way we've been doing things. So that's really, I just don't agree with the four years, you know, and that's, that's my biggest issue here. And otherwise, you know, I think, I explained the whole at-will. So you can either be at-will or you can be let go for cause. And if, and everybody else is at-will, and then we have somebody who's with cause and these very, very narrow reasons why you can, and I'm not suggesting we, we let her go at all. I'm just saying that we need to protect the county. That's our job as a board. It's to be responsible fiscally. And so, you know, that, I just, I'm not comfortable with that going forward. And then, yeah, and then I think that's it. I think going forward, though, I do think, I would like to suggest to the board that when we go through this, again, that we, we're all new to the board. I think it would be really wise if we have outside representation for us on the board when we're dealing with, you know, Barbara's an attorney, so she just has an advantage, basically. She came in, laid out, laid out all these things, laid out the four-year term. I, I think there was some confusion on the four-year term part. We need to have representation when we're negotiating with our County Counsel and I would say our CAO as well, that that just really, from a management perspective, makes a lot of sense. Otherwise, we're essentially approving a four-year, at this point, a four-year to what I see as a guaranteed contract. And I can't support that. Thank you.
Supervisor Tiffany?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just, the reason I was gonna pull it is, is just because, I mean, I knew this, this issue would come up and also some comments made by the public. Well, first of all, I just wanna make the comment that, and I think that Supervisor, I know Supervisor Cosmicki agrees with this as well as the, the, all of us. We all feel that County Council, Barbara's doing, has been doing a very good job. And I think we're not unhappy in any way with, you know, the performance that she's, she's doing. I think the question has to do with the, the term. You know, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the, the four-year term. You know, I know, like many of us, we're new to the board, but I think that Barbara's been doing a very good job. I think there's a lot to be said for continuity. And so I think the, the additional four, four years is warranted. I, I know that one of the reasons why the argument for a four-year term with County Council is that it, it minimizes the possibility that there would be any conflict of interest or any political overtones if you were a year-to-year. And, and so it, it creates a County Council to be a, a more independent voice. And I think that's the reason why it is the way it is. So anyway, I, I'm supportive of the four-year term. I understand Supervisor Cosmicki's points. I also wanted to just mention, although this was on the consent agenda, it is an item that all of us have talked about extensively. And of course, it's a personnel matter, so in closed sessions, there's been a lot of discussion and discussion directly with, with Barbara. So it's not as though this is something that was, you know, just, we're just trying to slam through. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to me, it's, it's pretty simple. There needs to be checks and balances, but at the end of the day, you need consistency and continuity. You're not gonna get that by having these year-to-years. And I don't agree with, with Supervisor Cosmicki on somehow, I guess, just auto, outside counsel sentiment. I mean, that's, that's to me akin to agreeing with an autoimmune disease. Like the goal is to somehow overly scrutinize our own department head because, I mean, that's what our position's for. I mean, at the end of the day, the, and, you know, I actually had a question for, for County Council, just even on the, the definition. Because ultimately, it sounds like, which maybe with good intent, the, the questioning of a four-year term because it might be, you know, Barbara might have too much power and I guess it's, maybe it's a little scary or something. But, so the question, Barbara, that I was gonna ask is, can you give me a little bit more clarity on what it defines neglect of duty, malfeasance, or misconduct? Can those be, to a certain extent, subjectively interpreted by your, by the board supervisor?
Madam Chair, if I may respond. Barbara's asked that, that I respond to any questions with respect to this matter because obviously she's personally interested in it. And the answer, the answer to that question is it depends on the facts. So if you have specific facts that, in your opinion, constitute misconduct, then you can initiate the proceedings to remove the County Council from office. So it would depend on specific facts. The case, the case, one of the cases that we cited, Guarino, involved just those, that factual situation where there were allegations made about the behavior of the County Council that was investigated, I think, three times. And ultimately, the, the board decided to proceed with proceedings to remove him and then he resigned. So in that case, it sounded like it was workplace discrimination, the exact nature of which is not clear from the, from the case. But it is not. First of all, under state law, and this is not a contract, this is a, the County Council is a county official. And under state law, the county official's term of office as County Council for a general law county is four years. And subject to being removed either through grand jury proceedings or through proceedings initiated by the board, through the board for cause. And so this only applies to general law counties, of which San Benito's one. So it, it's not an option for the board. If you're appointing a County Council, each appointment is a term of four years.
But I'm, you know, and Joel, thank you for that answer. But you kinda didn't answer it. But it, if anything, I still kinda got the assumption that, yes, there's a level, level of subjectivity. So it's not ironclad, the way Supervisor Cosmicki is mentioning. Neglect of duty, you know, I, maybe I could use a specific example. If there were situations that were brought up of concern about a possible lawsuit and that wasn't addressed, I mean, would that be considered neglect of duty?
That pattern would qualify.
Yeah, so, so there's subjectivity in it. I mean, at the end of the day. My big focus is making sure that we have continuity with this position. And, and yeah, and, and to a certain extent, I like that there's a level of separation between her and the board. I think that, that's fair, right? Because if we have outside counsel, then there's kind of scrutinizing of that, which kind of pushes them in the direction of becoming very leaning into maybe a board majority. And I don't think that, that, that's healthy. She, she has to, you know, whoever the County Council would be, I think, would have to have a level of objectivity and not have a, that intimidation element in, in why she would answer to certain issues or legal matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just wanna add that I disagree with the public comment. The gentleman who called in, I believe I recognize his voice, but I won't identify him. And I totally disagree with him. I fully support County Council and Barbara Thompson and all of her efforts that she has done in representing the county. I fully understand the statutory requirement for a year, a four-year appointment, contrary to one of my fellow board members, what they believe and what think, they think. But I, I kinda resent this conversation about malfeasance and any of that because then it sounds like we're attributing something of that nature to Barbara Thompson. And we have not had any conversation to that effect at all. And so right now, this is just merely to affirm the appointment of a four-year. It is a statutory term. It's a term that we can't go less than. So whether one particular person doesn't like the four years or not, it is the law. And we have appointed it. And so now we are just here to affirm the position that the board has already made. But as I said, you know, just to clarify, there are no allegations of any kind of malpractice, negligence, malfeasance of anything, any of that nature attributed to Barbara Thompson. So on that note.
Can I make one quick follow-up?
Actually, no.
We're not gonna do, we're never gonna allow follow-ups? I just would like to point out that Barbara Thompson herself noted that we could have her on board without a four-year term. Just to be clear.
No, what we're talking about, there, Barbara Thompson has a contract of employment with the county of San Benito from two thousand and seventeen. And she, what she was saying is that she doesn't want to, that, that. And what she was saying is that she doesn't want to, that, that contract does not have a term, an end term to it. It applies while she is serving as County Council. And so she's not requesting a contract. What is on the agenda today is appointment to a four-year term of office. That's different from a contract.
No, I'm just saying, she pointed out that she could follow the same model that Matt Granger had followed previously, which was not a four-year term. That was explicitly stated.
I have no idea, I have no idea what Matt Granger's arrangement with the county was.
I just want to point that out for the record. Thank you. And I do think we need to allow follow-ups, Madam Chair. We're getting to a point where if you disagree with something I'm going to say, you're going to shut me off. You allowed Peter Hernandez to do about five or six follow-ups earlier. Thank you.
So with that in mind, can I get a motion for item number 11?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we appoint Barbara Thompson to a new four-year term as County Council effective December 31, 2021.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that.
Second.
Okay, I'll give it to Peter. We have a first and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
So we have a three to one. Let's go ahead and go over to item number 13. And Nora, I did see you walk in. Hello?
Good afternoon, board. Oh, I'm glad that's done. Appreciate that. Vertically challenged as I am. Okay. So the, you pulled the item. So do you have some questions for me?
Oh, yeah, no, I just pulled this, just, I think it's a big deal. I just want to make sure that, you know, that I bring to light.
It is a big deal.
Yeah, and so strongly support a new library or expansion. And, and so we're going out for this grant, potentially $10 million. And we have to match it, and I think hopefully, we'll find a way to do that. I know I'm going to get behind that. But I also want to just bring to light along with this that it kind of underscores, to me, that the need for a contracted grant writer. I know that's something we've talked about in the past. We're going out for a grant here. We're doing some other grant pursuits out there. But if we can get this grant, I'd be very excited about that, and that's all I just wanted to say.
Thank you, Supervisor Cosmicki. I am, I have to say that I can't take full credit for this. I had been watching it and watching it and see when it would pass, and it finally did. But I have to acknowledge Mike Chambliss and Karen Guman, our CAO, Barbara Thompson, because we all pulled together, and also Gabe, in getting all the information and all the things that we needed and so that we will be able, there's a few little things still that need to be done and not with your approval and everything. We'll just get it finished, and it'll go in on time. So it was a real team effort across the variety of departments, and I really, really appreciate it. I know that the friends appreciate it, because if we do this, it will change a lot of things for us by having the space. We'll be able to be responsive to the needs of the community as opposed to being held back because it's the space that's dictating to us. And that prevents us at times from meeting the needs of our community. So thank you for your comment, Supervisor Cosmicki, and the support of all the rest of the board.
Thank you. Any other questions from the other supervisors? Okay, if there are none, then what is the will of the board in item number 13?
Move to approve as recommended.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so first and a.
Second.
Supervisor Tiffany could take that second. So we have a first and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
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 I have a 4-0 on item number 13. So that takes us then to future agenda items. And I believe I heard Supervisor Tiffany and Cosmicki make an agreement on something that we had, but I didn't note it down. So what was that, the future agenda item?
Madam Chair, what it had to do with is bringing back to our next meeting the issue of COVID incentives.
Okay.
Because we'll be close to potentially running out, and I'd like to see us discuss whether we want to extend them in some manner.
Okay. So that was both Supervisor Tiffany and Cosmicki for that one, the COVID incentives. Any others?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I received a request from Valerie Eglin to bring forward a proclamation recognizing former Supervisor Richard Place for his work in the late 90s to develop the Deanza Trail Concept. The trails become a really significant recreational resource here. Richard's now retired, and, and I know Richard real well. He's been, you know, contributed to this community for quite a long time, and I want to support Valerie's urging for a proclamation or certificate of recognition crediting the former supervisor for his work on this.
Do I have a second person who would support that?
I'll support it.
Okay. Supervisor Hernandez, did you have anything?
I had two items, Madam Chair, and I think it's already coming back, but just to make sure. One is the charter process. I know we were supposed to be educated on what that means and, you know, how that could make a difference with even the funding issue we've had as a county. And then the other element, which I believe you agreed you would support, Madam Chair, is a clarification on the exemption process for COVID.
So today's presentation wasn't enough for you, Supervisor Hernandez?
Well, we didn't, we didn't get what that process was. You know, I pulled the applications, there's a lot of ambiguity. There's a lot of questions surrounding that ambiguity. Yeah, I'd appreciate a lot more clarification.
We have a brief, a brief presentation, including a flow chart, that we were going to present at the next meeting.
Okay. And then you also have something prepared on the, on the charter, those two items?
Yeah, the charter was, the plan is to bring that back when we get a new supervisor. So fingers crossed we get one this month. But we're scheduling a presentation at the December meeting, so that's, that's when we're going to have it.
Yeah, I jotted that down this morning when you had mentioned the future items.
Yeah.
The charter counting, yes.
I was, Madam Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Supervisor Hernandez.
I was just gonna, yeah, I mean, if, is there the chance that we can get an update on who our new supervisor is going to be? Because I heard it was going to be before the end of the month.
Well, we all heard the same thing you heard two weeks, and we're in that two-week window today. But I haven't heard anything.
We still have not received any word from the legislature.
The last thing I heard was early this week.
Yeah.
Well, Tuesday is early in the week, so.
Tomorrow, tomorrow will be midweek.
Maybe before the end of the day, let's hope so.
Okay. So, so we have those four items then? Okay. All right, then, if there's nothing further, then can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second, first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 4-0. Supervisor Hernandez, before you go any further, was that a yes on the tourism after, after today's meeting?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so then I will see you in a bit. Okay. Meeting adjourned.
I'm good, thank you.